Good morning and welcome to the fourth hearing of the committee's inquiry into the proposal to develop Rosehill Racecourse. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation, the traditional custodians on the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people who may be joining us today. My name is Scott Farlow and I'm the Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence that they give today, however, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing and I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants and I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. Now, Ms Fishburne, welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you for taking the time to give evidence today. Could you please state your name, your position, title and take either the oath or the affirmation for it?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Chair and Committee. I'm Kirsten Emma Fishburne, I'm the Secretary of the Department of Planning, Housing and Infrastructure. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much, Ms Fishburne. Ms Fishburne, would you like to make a short opening statement?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Happy to proceed straight into questions?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'll kick off to begin with. So, there has been a long history with the ATC in looking at development proposals within their land or adjoining land, so to speak. No doubt that has centred around both Rosehill and Canterbury and potentially Randwick as well from some of the evidence we've received in this inquiry as well. Could you provide us where the meeting with the ATC on the 25th of October came from and how that meeting emanated?
Yes, I'm happy to provide some information on that. So, I initiated the meeting with the ATC. There were two things in particular that I was interested in, as I'm sure the committee's aware from documents that have been provided. We were in the process of trying to get to finalisation of the Camellia-Rosehill Play Strategy. That had, oh, sorry, rezoning. The play strategy had been completed in November 22 and we were working for the rezoning. Quite a complex number of inputs into that particular rezoning and it was delayed beyond what I was hoping for. I had been aware that the ATC had some interest in a master plan on lands in Rosehill outside of the racecourse itself, so lands where they have their car park and some of their stadium infrastructure and I was interested to understand from them whether their aspirations were consistent with what we had anticipated from the play strategy. The second reason that I wanted to meet with the ATC is, as you mentioned, Chair Canterbury. We were in that process in time, if we think back it feels like a lot longer than a year ago, of looking at the Todd Precincts and the Accelerated Precincts of which Canterbury-Bankstown have a number of interests there, so I wanted to understand what the ATC was interested in in relation to Canterbury-Bankstown. I'd also met with the ATC on a number of occasions in my previous role and I also wanted to ask them if they'd painted the fence at Warwick Farm because I spent four years badgering them as CEO of Liverpool to paint that fence and sad to say it's not yet been completed.
Okay, well, there might be a recommendation to paint the fence at Warwick Farm perhaps from this inquiry?
I'll keep on trying till I see that fence painted.
Thank you very much. And Ms Fishburne, with respect to the proposals that they outlined to you then on the 25th of October, was it outlined to you at all in those meetings that they were considering the sale of Rosehill Racecourse or the potential to redevelop the racecourse entirely?
No, that wasn't raised with me.
Was there any consideration of potentially redeveloping Canterbury Racecourse?
Yes, they did mention their interest in land on Canterbury Racecourse, I'm just going back to my notes as well. They were doing work with council at that point in time. My impression I got was that there were some tension points between their aspiration for development and council's aspiration for public open space. They were interested to look at the department potentially being more involved in that and they were looking to lodge a planning proposal, but at this point I haven't seen any of the further documentation there.
Thank you. And with respect to Rosehill, there was some frustration, wasn't, oh, we shouldn't say frustration, but maybe some contention in terms of some of the items in the play strategy. So, around the stables area, I believe that there had been identification for a school in that precinct, was that correct?
Yes, that is correct, but they didn't express that particular frustration to me in that meeting, but I was aware from notes that I'd been provided by my staff that there were some tension points there.
And with respect to the circus site, which is the area on James Roos Drive at the northern tip, was that identified as well for public open space or?
It certainly wasn't discussed in the meeting with me, we didn't get into that level of granularity and I don't have a copy of the play strategy currently on hand, so I'll have to just take that on notice, but it wasn't discussed in that meeting.
Okay, thank you. And with respect to that meeting as well, did you indicate to them at that time that they would require, in order to be able to substantiate a metro on the site, in the vicinity of 40,000 dwellings, to be able to substantiate a metro?
We did not discuss metro in that meeting.
Okay, that wasn't discussed in that meeting?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Further questions from the committee?
So, when did you become first aware of the proposal in relation to Rosehill?
In relation to Rosehill, I was made aware on December 6, which was, I believe, the day before the formal announcement. I can remember with some clarity there because it was actually at the Governor's Christmas reception and I was standing next to William Murphy, who I understand the committee has spoken to, when information started to come out, I think it was on Twitter or X, I don't know, William had it in his hand, not me, and he turned to me and said, "Oh, this is the project that I'll be working on", so I was formally aware then.
And that's also, I suppose, the first time you ever became aware of, if it follows, that you're of a proposal in relation to a metro station?
There had been some discussion, I don't think this is anything confidential, around alternative metro sites when Mike Murdock was undertaking the review and the department did provide some advice on different sites and whether they will potentially be suitable for a metro.
The Chair asked you a question in relation to a metro, you would have to demonstrate 40,000 potential home units before it would justify the delivery of a metro?
I've never said that nor heard that and it wouldn't be my place to make that decision, that would be a question for Sydney Metro or the government themselves.
But in respect of the play strategy around Rosehill, had a metro, the delivery of a metro station been discussed?
It wasn't contemplated when we understood, when we undertook the play strategy. I'm kind of giving you a reverse answer to say if a metro was confirmed in Rosehill, then we would go back and re-look at the play strategy. The play strategy was made consistent with a Parramatta Light Rail, so the level of uplift is consistent with what we would think would be appropriate for the light rail. It didn't contemplate a metro station.
Thank you.
Can I put to you, Secretary, a curious question now for the committee. Mr McMahon from the ATC, who was the author of the proposal to sell Rosehill, gave sworn evidence here that in August he had a meeting with the Metro Review team and they said you needed 40,000 lots there at Rosehill Camellia to justify a metro and that sparked the proposal and also the same thing was said at this meeting with you on the 25th of October. The Metro Review team have told this committee they had no such discussion in August and you're saying you had no such discussion in October. I've got the minutes of your meeting under the business contact form officer, the Secretary, and they make no mention of any discussion of metro or 40,000 dwellings being required. If that had been discussed, would they normally be recorded?
Yeah, absolutely. As you can, as you can see in my, the only thing that I note is not recorded was me asking them were they going to paint the fence at Warwick Farm. As you'll note, they did ask me in relation to metro, but it was about building over the metro tunnel and difficulty that they were having in getting information from Transport for New South Wales and we committed to making that contact for them.
Right, and you regard these minutes as an accurate reflection?
I do regard them as an accurate.
And, and who was it from the ATC who said that they confirmed that Rosehill and Randwick Racecourses are their premier racing venues and there was definitely no plan to relocate these?
I believe that was Steve McMahon. I can't, because I don't have the minutes in front of me, I'm relying on, I have the minutes in front of me, but we didn't minute exactly who said that, but I'm relying on my memory, but I believe it was Steve McMahon.
McMahon, so that's the one point of view of Mr McMahon that was reflected in the minutes and put to the meeting, we're not selling. Is there any other meeting that day with planning or any other communication with Mr McMahon where it was said that a metro would be justified with 40,000 dwellings?
Certainly not for myself. I would be very surprised, I know I can't speak for everybody in planning, but I've never heard that 40,000 number before, so I would be very surprised if anyone in the planning department had also provided that information. Considering people were aware that I was coming to this committee as well, I would expect that they would have advised me if anything had been said.
Thank you, and you're aware the next day off the back of your meeting, Mr McMahon met with Peter McGorran, the Chair of the ATC, and Matt Galanos, the CEO?
I'm only aware from things I've heard from the committee and the media, I don't have any actual knowledge.
And again, gave sworn evidence that off the back of your meeting, he told them, "Here's our metro opportunity, let's go forward with the sale" and they then organised a meeting with the Premier, so.
I can't, you're asking me to speculate on what occurred in a meeting I didn't attend. I can only tell you that in this meeting, as you've got my record of meeting, I did not discuss the metro other than their concerns about building on top of the metro, which was consistent with the master plan which they were presenting.
And on the basis of your meeting on the 25th of October, you'd be surprised that that was Mr McMahon's takeaway and subsequent action by the ATC?
I certainly.
Didn't come from you?
It didn't come from me, no. I have no authority to speak on behalf of the government about where a metro stop may or may not be. I think it would be completely inappropriate for me to do that. I was interested in understanding their development aspirations, including their master plan that they were working through with architects.
Okay, and Metro Review team have said the same. But just on renewal at Warwick Farm, you were in charge of the council, you might be happy to hear, I've just been able to secure the replacement of the William Long Bridge signs at Warwick Farm, so it's not that hard to get things done, so stick with that fence paint.
Thank you, Mr Latham, you clearly are more convincing than I am.
Well, as a former mayor, of course, I carry weight out there still, so hang in there with your fence. You want me to take up the fence?
I will, thank you very much, we'll take that as an action from this committee meeting.
Thank you very much, thank you, but we can minute that.
And Ms Fishburne, in that meeting, did you at all suggest the redevelopment of Rosehill Racecourse? In what context, I guess the question is, was it outlined to you that it was their premier racetrack and they had no plans for development?
So, they had the master plan, which they were presenting to me. I asked whether they had considered further use of the land, for instance, reconfiguring the racecourse so you could get more developable land out of it and at that point they said that, I think they'd looked at reconfiguring the racecourse, but Rosehill was their premier racecourse and it was impossible. And Randwick, and they also alluded to Randwick as well. I think I should say, this is in the context of not just discussing Rosehill, we were literally working through all four of the ATC sites and what their aspirations may be on them, so it's a kind of joined up conversation that's probably not as reflected in the minutes.
Can I just have a point of clarification there, Chair? When you said, somebody said it was, Rosehill Racecourse was the premier racecourse and it was impossible, who said that?
No, not that it was impossible, I asked them whether they had looked at reconfiguring the racecourse site to get more developable land, noting they had a master plan. And I believe, and again, I'm just relying on my memory because there were a number of people in the room, but I believe it was Steve McMahon who said, "No, they'd looked at it and it didn't work" and Rosehill and Randwick were their premier racecourses.
And with respect to the Rosehill Camellia Play Strategy, what's the status of that now?
It's currently on hold while consideration is being undertaken for the USP.
Okay, so, so no further work is being undertaken on the Rosehill Camellia Play Strategy?
Not to my knowledge, we certainly are not progressing it aggressively to get it completed at this point in time because we would have to rework it should Rosehill become part of the strategy.
And if Rosehill were not to become part of the strategy, and I do take it that I'm asking you a hypothetical?
You are asking a hypothetical.
But in terms of, how quickly could you restart the Rosehill Camellia Play Strategy?
We were fairly advanced at the point when, when Rosehill came into play, so dependent on whether other decisions were made, for example, a metro generally, that would also change it as well, but we were quite advanced around October 23, hence why I was kind of rounding out the discussions to check that the strategy was consistent with some of the major landowners.
And with respect to some of the other sites, you've outlined Canterbury as well, I suspect, what's the status in terms of redevelopment surrounding the Canterbury Racecourse?
I haven't received an update on that, there's nothing in with the department at this point in time.
And that sits with Canterbury-Bankstown Council, doesn't it?
That would sit with Canterbury-Bankstown Council as a planning proposal, yes.
Okay, thank you. And with respect to some of the other facilities, Warwick Farm, what are some of the visions that were outlined with respect to Warwick Farm and proposals there?
At that particular meeting in October, they indicated that they had no further aspirations in Warwick Farm. I do recall, and Mr Latham will probably be better able to answer this than me, there are challenges in relation to flood constraints and heritage in Warwick Farm. It was certainly when I was the general manager, we had been exploring some options with ATC, but I believe they've since decided not to pursue those.
And with respect to Randwick, what were some of the proposals that were discussed?
So, we have, on a number of occasions, dealt with modifications with, on Randwick. It was raised at that meeting that they were looking at possibilities of some student accommodation in Randwick and it would come in as a modification to the department. I'll take on notice, but I don't think it has, has come into the department since that discussion.
Okay, thank you. And with respect to the ATC's former proposals, both along Canterbury and at Rosehill, what was sort of the yield that they were looking at in terms of housing development in both of those sites?
I cannot recall Canterbury because it's been some time since I've had a look at it, but we'll take that on notice and see what the latest information we had with the department, noting that it would be a planning proposal into council. I believe for their Rosehill plans and this, and again, let me just say this is excluding the racecourse, this is the other lands that they, that they have, I believe the yield was around 3,000 dwellings.
Thank you. And of course, the Sydney Olympic Park site falls within your department's purview.
It does, yes.
Has the Department of Planning, Housing and Infrastructure done any work with respect to alternative proposals at the Brickpit site?
No, we have not done any, any direct work on that.
Have you had any discussions with the ATC or Racing New South Wales?
I've had no discussions with the ATC. Last time I spoke to my staff at SOPRA about it, they also had had no discussions. I understand you had the CEO of SOPRA in, you would be aware from that information, it is a very environmentally constrained site and we've been, always been very clear in every respect in relation to SOPRA of those challenges.
Thank you.
Can I ask, Secretary, you mentioned that you found out about the Rosehill proposal the night before the announcement of the sale?
Yep.
At the racecourse itself? Is that standard practice in the development, an announcement of a USP, that planning doesn't know about it and is not involved?
Oh, well, generally, planning has a limited involvement in USPs, which is right and proper, just because something comes in as a USP, it doesn't guarantee a planning outcome. So, many times, a USP will already be in play before planning is actually advised that is there and that we should, you know, there's often requests for specific planning advice. We have a process within the department to manage those, so USPs go for our planning concierge who will then seek our advice and provide it back, just so we kind of keep things a bit contained. This USP obviously is of a larger scale. I'm happy to talk through the probity pieces we've put into place, I think you've probably got them as discoverable documents because of the challenges. So, no, it is not unusual that we become aware of a USP at the point where government is in discussions about it. When the announcement was made, I understand there was not actually a USP, it was, you know, discussion to move that forward, so that, you know, by the time it became a USP, obviously the department was aware of it. I was having discussions internally about how we would potentially, and it was kind of crystal balling it because we wanted to manage conflicts into the future rather than those that may exist on the day itself, but we undertook that work and put in place some probity measures.
And this particular one, when did your concierge become involved for the first time?
The concierge was not involved in this particular USP due to the scale of it, so I was made aware of it, as I said, was formally announced. We were waiting to see whether the USP would be submitted and at that point I commenced some discussions internally about how we would manage the USP and I actually, I might talk you through some of those discussions because I just think it's useful to set the context. So, obviously, the USP would be looking at developing Rosehill Racecourse, that would require a rezoning to occur, so it would require strategic planning. Then at a certain point, should that occur down the line, there would be development applications coming in and I'm not saying whether the department would be the consent authority or City of Parramatta, but I just wanted to put in place barriers around the whole lot of it. We knew that the complexity of a USP like Rosehill Racecourse would require planning advice, there is no way you could get around that and it would be, you know, you wouldn't be able to assess it without good planning advice. So, I made a decision in consultation with my general council that the way we would deal with this is that, and the planning department is essentially split into two areas, strategic planning, development planning, it matches the Planning Act, that the strategic planning area would not be involved in providing planning advice for the Rosehill Racecourse USP. Instead, the development assessment area would be involved in it so that there was a separation if, if it should come in as a planning proposal. And then later down the line, if any development applications came into the department and we're really, you know, we're travelling down in time here, then the Deputy Secretary who had been involved in the advice on the USP would delegate out his powers in relation to those DA's. So, we just put in place a number of guardrails so we could make sure that the advice we were providing was sound and reasonable, but that it wasn't conflated with any potential rezoning.
Right, but something this big would ultimately qualify as state significant development. Is that the expectation for how it would be handled post the USP?
Yeah, I would, it could be dealt with as a planning proposal by council and my understanding from discussions with the CEO of City of Parramatta is that they would be open to that idea. Parramatta is quite a sophisticated council in their ability to deal with planning matters, so, you know, that would definitely lie open to them. Or it could be done as a state-led rezoning. My guess is, I think you're right, we would say this, because of the scale and complexity, it should be a state-led rezoning, but I don't want to be prejudging a decision that is further down the line.
Right, and inside planning, what's the status of the Camellia-Rosehill rezoning civil design package report from BG&E in January of this year that identifies Rosehill Racecourse as a flooding hotspot?
It's, it's, it's an input into the rezoning that's currently on hold.
Currently on hold?
Currently on hold.
This was done for Camellia?
This is done for Camellia-Rosehill, but the rezoning itself is currently on hold.
So, as far as you know, it is a flooding hotspot according to this report? There's no, there's no report that contradicts this?
I'm, I'm not that much into the detail, I'm sorry, I can take that on notice.
Is planning looked at contamination issues at Rosehill? I recently spoke to a former racecourse manager who said if you stand at the winning post at Rosehill, you can't see the other side of the course because of the fill and material that's been placed there over many decades. Has that ever been tested for contamination?
Not to my knowledge. Certainly, we would not have undertaken any of that contamination work in relation to the Camellia-Rosehill rezoning because it didn't anticipate the racecourse as part of the rezoning package. There is significant contamination, as you'll be aware, around Camellia-Rosehill and one of the challenges in the play strategy and then in the work towards the subsequent rezoning is managing those contamination issues.
Right, on a broader policy and development issue, at budget estimates, the Premier outlined words to the effect of, you know, a thousand different nightmare scenarios for trying to get a development through. He's now taken investment in New South Wales into his own department, USPs look like they're becoming the flavour of the month. What's the attitude of planning that if USPs become an alternative way of getting housing development and housing supply moving in Sydney?
I can't, I don't have an opinion.
There's a point of order, I'll hear from Mr, sorry, Ms Fishburne.
Sorry, Chair, I was just saying, Mr Latham was asking the Secretary an opinion, that's not in order.
If the Secretary may.
Has, has planning made any submissions anywhere in government about the development of an alternative planning development model? Or given advice to the Premier about it?
In relation to USPs?
Yeah, yeah, USPs emerging.
No. The only comment.
What would you say about it?
I can't, I'm a public servant, I'm not here to give an opinion. What I can say though is that planning consistently has said USPs need to be separated out from the planning outcome and a USP is not a guarantee of a planning outcome. I think that's been a message that the department has been giving consistently for many years. That doesn't speak to the merits of USPs one way or the other, it's simply the, a statement of fact in relation to how we undertake planning.
And would it be your expectation all USPs would follow the ICAC guidelines on direct dealing?
Yes, that would be my expectation.
Have you made any review of, is there any role for planning in checking that that's the case?
No, there is not a role for planning in that, relation to that.
Thank you. Mr Nava?
Secretary, housing and metro issues around Camellia and Rosehill have been investigated, litigated now since 2016, 2017. What sort of analysis is undertaken by planning with respect to the costs and benefits of the numerous iterations of metro and housing proposals for that area?
That's not the work for the planning department to undertake. We would be providing inputs into metro in relation to cost benefit analysis, to my knowledge, and I will take this a bit on notice because it's a big department, we have not been asked for specific inputs into cost benefit analysis in relation to Camellia-Rosehill.
Has planning undertaken any work with the Murdock review into the Western Metro with respect to alignments, you know, uplift in housing, potential for uplift in housing in line with the government's priorities?
In the, in the most general sense, so we certainly haven't provided any inputs into alignments. We've been asked for advice on a number of suburb areas in that area, such as Silverwater and whether, for instance, that may be suitable or aspirational for a metro stop. So, we tend to provide the input. So, if I give you instance, an example in relation to Silverwater, what we would raise is that it's industrial land, it's fairly fragmented and there's contamination issues. So, we would provide that type of planning advice to any discussions and considerations, but we have not been formally asked to look at uplift and in relation to a metro location.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Fang.
Thank you, Ms Fishburne. Just in relation to the Brickpit, which was previously mentioned, you've obviously indicated that there are environmental sensitivities around that site. Has there been any consideration at all, should the Rosehill precinct go ahead and it be developed for housing, there would be a need for another Class One racetrack in New South Wales? That's been the indication from Racing New South Wales. And that they would look to use the Brickpit for that. Would it not just be simpler to turn the Brickpit into housing if it is available for development? Given that it's close to public transport, it's close to original, like, I guess, housing already? Should, should the work not be done by the department for housing and infrastructure and planning in relation to looking at that consideration if there is any possibility at all the Brickpit's going to be used as a racetrack?
You've asked me quite a few compounded questions there.
I did because I'm short of time and so I just thought I would get it all out and then you can pick the bits that you like.
Some of them are really quite speculative in nature, so let me answer what I can in relation to.
Saying forgiveness, not permission, I say.
We have not been asked to consider the Brick, formally asked to consider the Brickpit in relation to a racecourse or housing, so that's a fact. The second fact is that the environmental constraints that I've already alluded to in relation to the Brickpit would remain in place where at housing or any other form of development. I think you would be challenged to manage out those environmental constraints under any development outcome.
Okay, so, given that, obviously, the Brickpit wasn't part of the land audit that was done in relation to trying to find additional government land for housing, it's unlikely that it's also going to have a permission to be used as a racetrack. Is it, is it fair to say that it's a fantasy that we're ever going to see a Class One racetrack built on the Brickpit?
You really are asking me to speculate there and, you know, secretaries of planning don't get to, get to deal in fantasy terribly often. I can only repeat what I've said, which that we have not been asked to consider it, but I do believe that the environmental constraints in relation to the Brickpit would be inhibitive for any form of development.
I take from your answer the words fantasy and Class One racetrack at the Brickpit and I'll put the two together and I'll leave my question in there.
I will enjoy looking at the transcript and seeing that I did not conjoin any of those things, but thank you, Ms Fishburne.
I guess I'm projecting forward that I am.
Okay, thank you, Mr Fang. Ms Fishburne, just on that question as well, have you been asked to investigate any other sites for a Class One racetrack at all?
No, we have not been formally asked to investigate any sites, to my knowledge. Again, I'm relying on the fact that I assume my departmental staff would have advised me on this. I can say though that obviously we have considered what assets are in the government's portfolio should we be asked to give advice, but at this point we haven't been asked.
Okay, and what would those assets potentially be?
I think in this has been, and I'm using the word speculation, but I believe it's been speculated on in the media, potentially land that is in the Greater Sydney Park Lands asset class.
Okay, are we talking around the Sydney International Equestrian Centre site or?
That's, that's way beyond the conversation points, it's, you know, simply acknowledgement that government does have Greater Sydney Park Lands as an asset and, and has been using that for a number of recreational and sporting purposes.
You said formally, do you, have you been asked informally?
No, I don't believe so. There was at some point a question circulating around whether SOPRA had spoken to the Brickpit. So, I'm just advising at that point, I asked, "Has anyone from SOPRA spoken to the ATC about Brickpit?", the answer was no, so that's the, that's the level of advice.
The informal aspect, thank you.
Any further questions from the committee? There being none, thank you very much, Ms Fishburne, for your attendance here today.
A pleasure as always, Mr Farlow, and thank you for my fence at Warwick Farm. When I see you... When I see that painted...
I'm on it.
What colour would you like? Have you specified a colour at all?
Just anything other than peeling khaki green would be delightful.
Fresh khaki green, Mr. Lytham.
Colour bond, sir.
It's colour bond.
The entire racecourse is peeling, don't worry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fishburne. That concludes your evidence. I'm not sure if you took anything on notice, but if you did, the Secretary will be in touch with you. Thank you again. Brian, thank you very much for joining us, and thank you for taking the time to give evidence today. If you would please outline your name and then your position title, and either swear the oath or the affirmation to begin, please.
My name's Terry O'Brien, I'm the Director of Policy and Racing at Hospitality and Racing within the Department of Creative Industries, Tourism, Hospitality and Sport. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. O'Brien, would you like to make a short opening statement?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
No, thank you. Mr. O'Brien, when did you first learn about the proposal to redevelop Rosehill Racecourse for housing?
I first learned about it when it was announced in the media.
Okay, so was there any consultation at all with the Office of Racing prior to that?
No, not about the specific proposal. We were asked to provide some information to the Cabinet Office. It must have been maybe four or six weeks before that around the role of Racing New South Wales and the role of the ATC. But not about the specific proposal.
And that was effectively the demarcation in terms of land, asset holdings and the like, was it?
It was more around what are the legislative responsibilities of Racing New South Wales and its functions, and also in relation to the ATC and its land holdings.
Thank you. And with respect to the proposal as it stands at the moment and the unsolicited proposal process, what's the role of Racing, of the Office of Racing within that process?
We don't have any role in that.
So no advisory role whatsoever?
No, that's all right.
Thank you. Further questions, committee?
What was the, who asked you for that advice, you said four to six weeks ahead of the announcement of the sale of Rosehill?
It was from the Cabinet Office.
Mr. Murphy?
No, it wasn't directly from Mr. Murphy, it was from the legal team within the Cabinet Office.
Legal team within the Cabinet Office. Did you provide any advice to Investment New South Wales? Because they had some material in this period speculating, they thought confirming that the board of the ATC could approve the sale of the asset, it didn't have to go to a membership vote.
No, I don't remember, I don't recall providing any advice to Investment New South Wales. My recollection is it was only through the Cabinet Office.
Right, and what was the advice you provided to the Cabinet Office about that particular issue of membership vote for a sale?
So we provided some advice around the ATC's role and also its constitution and as a registered club under the Registered Clubs Act. There's some obligations there around the sale of core and non-core land, and that core land requires a member's vote. I think it's a 75% threshold for members to approve the sale of core assets.
Right, is that the only advice you provided to the Cabinet Office? Or you told them about the infrastructure approval role of Racing New South Wales under the...
So it was more about setting out Racing New South Wales' roles and responsibilities and functions under the Thoroughbred Racing Act?
Right. And who in the Cabinet Office asked for that advice?
I can't recall the name, but it was from the legal department within, the legal unit within the Cabinet Office.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. O'Brien at all? And Mr. O'Brien, in terms of the proposal as it stands, we've heard from Racing New South Wales that they would require, in order to approve any such proposal, an additional Class One, Group One racetrack to be identified and built within the Sydney Metropolitan Region. Has the Office of Racing done any work in identifying such a site or assessing any?
No, we don't have any role in relation to scoping or looking for new racetracks.
And if a new racetrack was identified or the like, would you have any role in terms of accrediting it at all or approving it?
So under the Betting and Racing Act, the Minister's required to licence racecourse. There's a licensing function for the Minister in relation to racecourses, and so if the Racing New South Wales and the ATC identified a new racecourse and wished it to be licensed to conduct racing, then we'd have a role in terms of providing a briefing and seeking the Minister's approval for that licensing.
And what's that process that you would go through? Do you just tick and, do you just effectively verify that it is a racetrack and provide a brief to that effect? Or what sort of due diligence do you do in terms of...
Well, it would be in terms of what the Minister needs to, I don't have the particular provisions of the Act in front of me, but it would be making sure that it meets the requirements of the legislation in terms of licensing a racecourse. But we would rely on Racing New South Wales and the ATC to demonstrate that it meets their requirements, particularly Racing New South Wales as the regulator of the industry, that it meets their minimum standards and relevant provisions in relation to being an accredited racetrack.
And would you need external consultants or the like to work on such a proposal?
No, no.
If you've got all the ability in-house to be able to work through?
To perform that legislative function, yes.
And when was the last racetrack that, new racetrack that was licensed?
There have been, probably I've been in the Office of Racing for eight years and maybe we've done it three or four times at a maximum.
And I take it most of those have been in regional areas, haven't they? And how long is that process that is typically undertakes by identifying a new racetrack and licensing it?
So we don't have any role in terms of identifying the racetrack.
I understand that, but in terms of, yeah, in terms of that process prior to coming to you and then being licensed through the Office of Racing and, or should I say, the Minister with the advice of the Office of Racing?
Yeah, so the licensing part in terms of the Minister, it would probably be one to three months depending on the nature of the proposal.
Thank you. Mr. Tudor.
Does the Office of Racing provide any probity advice to the Minister in relation to the USP?
No.
So who would have provided that advice to the Minister?
My understanding is it would be through Investment New South Wales, who's responsible for the USP process.
Have you provided any advice to Minister Harris about this proposal?
No, not specifically, no.
Were you involved in the commissioning of the probity advice by which he told budget estimates in February that he couldn't talk about it?
No, that's the advice I was just referring to, and I understand that was from, through Investment New South Wales.
Right, okay.
Can I ask Chair?
Who's Ferman?
So the Office of Racing, how many staff do you have?
It's six staff, including myself.
Right. Could you provide the very small organisational chart to this committee in terms of what... So the appointment of members to Racing New South Wales, does the Office of Racing have anything to do with that process?
Yes, we support the Minister undertake his functions in relation to the legislation, racing-related legislation, that includes around board appointments, so we provide secretarial support.
So that's an administrative role?
That's right.
The Minister, it's your understanding the Minister has the final say in the appointment of those members?
That's right, that's how it's set out under the Racing Act.
That's how it's set out, is that how it's done in practice?
Yes.
Does the CEO of Racing New South Wales have any say in those appointments? Thank you.
So just to be able to understand, the Office of Racing has had no involvement in the announcement or decision-making in relation to the sale of Rosehill Racecourse?
That's correct.
Is that your evidence?
That's correct.
Do you find, I suppose I can't say, do you find that unusual? I find it unusual. This is like one of the premier, would you agree with the characterisation of this racecourse as one of the number one racecourses in New South Wales?
Yes, that's right.
Can I just ask?
Yes, Mr. O.
Mr. O'Brien, in that respect then, have you not provided any advice to the Minister or this government in relation to the impact of the loss of a Class One racetrack to New South Wales?
That's right.
Have you been asked what impact it would have?
We haven't been asked.
What advice would you give if you were asked what a loss of a Class One racetrack in New South Wales would mean?
Point of order from Mr. Neva.
Chair, Mr. Fang is asking the witness a question that is both hypothetical and an opinion and not in order within the procedural fairness resolution.
Well, to the point of order, the proposal is to develop Rosehill Racecourse, it's indeed the title of this inquiry. So it's neither speculative or an assumption to ask what it would mean should this go ahead, what it would mean in relation to racing in New South Wales. We are speaking to a Director of the Office of Racing. There is a proposal to develop one of the two Class One racetracks in New South Wales into housing. My question is valid, and in no way is it out of order.
Further to the point of order? Yes, Mr. Neva.
The opinion that Mr. Fang is seeking is predicated on a hypothetical, and that is Rosehill proceeding. So it's out of order on two grounds.
Well, to that point of order, Mr. Neva's a member of the government's proposing to develop Rosehill Racecourse. I'm seeking to understand what it would mean to the Office of Racing. It's neither a hypothetical because the Premier did stand there and propose it, and again, I'm just seeking to understand what impact it would have to Racing in New South Wales.
Look, it is a difficult point in terms of it is a proposal, we are having an inquiry into a proposal, so therefore I think questions with respect to the proposal are valid. However, with respect to the opinion of the witness, I would note that he is a public servant and can't provide an opinion, but if you'd like to rephrase it in terms of the process or the like, I think that is within order.
Well, I'll rephrase it so that I can perhaps elicit a response. Should the proposal by the Men's Labor Government to develop Rosehill Racecourse go ahead and Sydney and New South Wales was to lose a Class One racetrack, could your office provide advice as to what that impact would be? And can you provide, I guess, an overview of what you would expect that advice might contain?
Can I, by raising a point of order? No problem with the first part of the question, but the second part is seeking to elucidate information that a public servant is about to provide, may provide to a minister.
No, but to that point of order, the question's been clearly asked and answered, that there has been no advice sought. So there's no advice going to the Minister as yet. I'm asking the question, which I'm entitled to do in the hearing. There's no cabinet incompetence or no issues because there's been no request from the Minister or the Cabinet for this.
But you're asking for what that advice may contain.
Yes, because the Minister hasn't asked for it, I'll ask for it.
Well, let's put the question to Mr. O'Brien, and Mr. O'Brien can determine how he answers it.
So I don't think it'd be appropriate to speculate on what advice we might provide at a point in time. What I would point out is that Racing New South Wales has a number of functions under the Racing Act, including around the economic and strategic development of racing in the best interests of racing and the state of New South Wales. It would have, it would need to consider what the loss of a metropolitan track and how it might, how it might replace that.
So would it be the job of the Office of Racing or Racing New South Wales to provide the advice to the Minister and the Men's Government as to what impact it would have to racing? Do you see that the economic impact and the social impact to New South Wales as something that would be the purview of your office or the purview of Racing New South Wales?
Racing New South Wales.
Okay, so typically what advice do you provide to the government if it's not strategic or economic or, is it purely technical in nature related to the Act and the impact of the Act to the Minister and to the departments and to Racing New South Wales itself?
Point of order.
Mr. Neva, yeah?
Chair, this is not a question that relates to the terms of reference, it's the way the office operates. Those are questions that can be asked at budget estimates, but that's not a question that refers to terms of reference with respect to the proposal developed by the Racecourse.
To the point of order, I don't understand why the two Labor members, maybe a minister one day, but two Labor members over there are running such cover for this. The simple question as to what advice falls within the scope of the Office of Racing versus Racing New South Wales is clearly a valid question. I don't understand why the government whip would seek to shut this line of questioning down other than I'm going down a hole that you don't want me to go down because there's something there.
Look, I think that it is a, I think it certainly is a related matter in this instance. In order to be able to understand the role of Racing New South, oh sorry, the Office of Racing in the development of this proposal and the assessment of the proposal, I think it is helpful to all committee members to be able to understand what the typical role of the Office of Racing is, particularly as opposed to Racing New South Wales. So I'll allow the question.
Well, you've dug yourself quite a hole at the moment, so. Mr. O'Brien, the Office of Racing is purely related to technical aspects, related to the Act and how it, I guess, is implemented by the Minister and the government to Racing New South Wales?
So we provide administrative support to the Minister in relation to racing-related legislation.
Okay, so there's no strategic, no analysis, no economic, no feasibility advice that's provided, it's purely technical in nature related to the Act only?
We might provide some advice in those sorts of areas, but typically we would seek that advice from other authorities in relation to those in the matter, so.
And what authorities would they be?
Well, depending on the nature of the expert advice, it might be Racing New South Wales, it might be New South Wales Treasury, it might be other government departments.
Okay, so in the instance where there's been an unsolicited proposal from the ATC to develop Rosehill Racecourse, and both the ATC and Racing New South Wales have obligations under the Act and under their agreements to provide stability and sustaining, I guess, economic actions for racing in New South Wales, and the Minister is responsible for that. It's not unreasonable then that your office would be engaged to understand the impact that this proposal would have and provide independent advice, even though you might take some advice from, say, Racing New South Wales, provide independent advice to the Minister about this proposal, and yet that hasn't happened, is that correct?
The Minister doesn't have any role in relation to the proposal at this stage?
So the Minister isn't involved in this from, I guess, a racing standpoint, given that one of the only, the only two Class One tracks is potentially going to be developed for housing? The Minister has no involvement whatsoever in the protection of racing in New South Wales because of this development? That seems extraordinary to me.
So there's a USP process that's been undertaken at the moment?
Yes.
And that has defined roles and responsibilities in terms of how that is taken forward?
And who is responsible then for providing advice to the Minister and the government in order to protect racing should this proposal go ahead?
So that's a hypothetical, that's probably taking it to the next step, I can't really comment on that. At the moment, it's going through a USP process and...
But surely that USP, surely that USP must at some point balance up the gain in housing versus the loss of a Class One racetrack? That surely must be on the government's radar in relation to this proposal. Is that correct?
I think that's for the proponents of the proposal and the government in terms of the USP process and assessing that to...
Yes, I understand that, but again, in assessing that, there must be advice given to the government that looks at the proponents, I guess, proposals, and we know that one of those proposals has been to turn the brick pit into a Class One racetrack. There's been suggestion that Warwick Farm would be turned into a Class One racetrack. There's now a suggestion that they might find another greenfield site to turn into a Class One racetrack. Surely at some point, there must be involvement from your office... Surely at some point, um, there must be involvement from your office to provide analysis as to these uh, contrary proposals that would see another class one racetrack built and then provide that advice to the minister. Do you think it's, um, do you think it's a sign at all that you've not been asked to do any of that analysis work? That the government acknowledges that there is no uh, class one racetrack alternative that can be put forward?
So I'm not going to answer the last part of the question because I don't think.
I know, yeah, I know, I I just thought I'd throw it in there for.
Um, but in terms of, um, we haven't been asked to provide anything at this stage through the USP process. It may be at some stage in the future we will be.
Were you ready to provide advice to the minister?
We're always ready to provide.
And you, and you're surprised you haven't been asked yet?
Point of order.
I'll uphold.
That was asking opinion, I know. I did push that on.
Okay, um, just briefly and then I'll go to Mr. Nambur. Um, with respect to any of that advice that you would provide, um, would you provide that advice internally? Or would you seek advice from, as you said previously, other agencies such as, let's say, for instance, Racing New South Wales as to, for instance, whether Warwick Farm could be upgraded to a a group one racetrack?
I mean, it would depend on the nature of the advice that we've been asked to give as to what um, authorities we might go to to seek some of that further information.
Um, but would you be capable um, internally of being able to provide advice as to, let's say, for instance, whether Warwick Farm could be upgraded to a group one racetrack?
No, we would need to seek external advice on that.
Thank you. Mr. Nambur.
Uh, thank you, Chair.
But the committee's previously received evidence that the point at which different agencies are engaged to provide advice is proportionate to the stage at which the USP process is up to. Would you agree with that assessment?
Well, point of order, that, that is seeking and a.
I'll rephrase it, I'll rephrase it.
Thank you.
Is it correct that agencies are, um, advice is sought from agencies proportionate to the point at which USP processes are up to?
I'm not an expert on the USP process, but um, that logically makes sense.
Um, would you expect to be consulted at the relevant point in time of the USP process as it accords with whatever powers you have?
I'll take a point of order there because that's also seeking an opinion.
If you rephrase it, Mr. Nambur.
Uh, when the USP is further progressed, uh, will you be consulted at the appropriate time um, with respect to matters you have carriage over?
It's seeking an opinion, but I'll also let it go.
I don't think it is, but, Mr. O'Brien.
Uh, we haven't been asked to provide advice at this stage. If we're asked to provide advice in the future, then we, we, um, we're, we're able to do that.
In relation, in relation to matters within this proposal that you have carriage over?
No more opinions, you want?
I've got plenty of opinions.
Thank you, Mr. Tudor.
It's true to say you're, you're responsible, your office are responsible for the administration of racing for the regions for fund, is that right?
That's right, yeah.
Um, and there were certain, as I understand, development applications rela- lodged in relation to the racing for the regions, um, expenditure?
Yeah, there, there are a number of different projects under the, that program and um, uh, my understanding is that they will all require development.
Have those development applications been lodged to your?
Oh, the, as I say, there's a number of projects and they're all at different stages. So some of them have been approved, some of them are lodged, some of them are at the pre-approval stage at this.
So when you say a number, how many?
How many projects?
Yeah.
Uh, so it's nine regional racecourses. Some of those have um, a number of projects. I I can provide on notice exactly how many projects.
Can, in, in providing that on notice, can you provide on notice the, uh, the, the nature of the projects and the dates where planning approval was sought in relation to those projects?
I can provide that, that on notice, yes.
Thank you.
One final question, Chair, just in terms of the um, selection panel for the members that are up for selection for Racing New South Wales. Could you provide, or do you know who's on that selection panel or could you provide that on notice, please?
Uh, so the selection panel is confidential, so I can't disclose who's on that panel.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, for your evidence today. You have taken some questions on notice, so the secretary will be in touch with you um, seeking an answer to those questions on notice. Um, the committee will now move into a very brief deliberative meeting. So I would ask all who are in attendance to please vacate the, the room momentarily before we um, come back. Um, momentarily, let's just say. It'll be very brief. Thank you all.
Matthew McGrath, I was the ex-chair of the ATC.
Thank you. And would you like to swear either for the affirmation?
Yep. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much. Mr. Finnemore?
Ron Finnemore, I'm a past chairman of the AJC and was part of the formation of the ATC through that process. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, Mr. Finnemore. And would either of you like to make a short opening statement for the benefit of the committee?
I would.
Yes, Mr. McGrath.
Probably about three or four minutes.
That is fine.
Thank you for the invitation to be here today. I was Australian Turf Club chairman from 2018 to 2022. I was a government-appointed director and elected chair by my fellow board members. Under legislation, I ceased my role in 2022. At the AGM, two months later, I was gratefully awarded life membership to the ATC. It's important to acknowledge all those team members who deliver the collective vision and the strategy of the ATC in Racing New South Wales, the people who grow the grass, to those pouring beers on race day, to the gate attendants, and to the head office staff. These are the dedicated people who ensure the success of racing, and we saw it again on Saturday for the eighth edition of the Everest. Members and industry participants have not only built this club, but have supported it through any number of challenges, be it wars, economic downturns, equine influenza, and more recently COVID. I was asked a question at the second ATC Members' Forum earlier this year, why does the ATC always go to Racing New South Wales for funding? Over my term as chair, that was not the case. We built four poly tracks at each course at a spend of $12 million, the Randwick Multi-Deck Car Park and Day Stalls, $30 million, the Kensington Track rebuild, $15 million, stabilizing upgrades across all tracks, $6 million, training track upgrades, $5 million, the Wink statue and member facility upgrades, $10 million, plus $29 million spent on the Wink stand. Over $100 million in CapEx, and with a vast majority of it spent on welfare outcomes for the horses and the people that care for them, and all 100% fully funded by the Australian Turf Club. On the Wink stand in 2018, I raised the ATC board to build and name the Wink stand at Randwick. The club was able to fully fund the $29 million project. When I discussed this with Racing New South Wales, they rightly suggested making the stand larger, however, it would double the cost. I successfully negotiated a loan with the then Racing New South Wales chairman and the current Racing New South Wales CEO for the extra $29 million on a 15-year repayment term. Thus, the Wink stand was built in its current form due to a strong, respectful, and cohesive relationship between the ATC and Racing New South Wales. Though the loan isn't due to expire till 2033, the ATC has already paid down 66% of it. This loan will be paid off some eight years ahead of schedule. When it comes to the profitability of the ATC, in those four years, we amassed $66 million in EBITDA and had $8 million in cash at bank and an unspent $12 million provision from 2018, the best race club performance in Australia. In the aftermath of COVID, we provided an industry-leading $200 credit to all ATC members to thank them for their loyalty. This was a gain fully funded by the Australian Turf Club at a cost of $2 million. We still remain profitable. We still invest in our infrastructure. Which leads us to the topic of the funding model. In 2018, I signed a 15-year agreement with Racing New South Wales that ensured the success of the ATC. It guaranteed a minimum of $90 million per annum to the ATC. This was an agreement based on what was best for the club and industry. I give credit to Mr. Bowling and Mr. Valandis in listening to our logic and vision at the time to make this happen. What's also been raised is the debt that the ATC has incurred to Racing New South Wales. This was created over a decade ago, when the interminable loan was established with a sum of $99 million, which is the debt of the AJC and STC upon agreeing to merge. This loan is not unique to the ATC, as some 23 other New South Wales race clubs have the same loan setup with Racing New South Wales. These loans are due and payable only under the condition of certain land sales that activate the repayment. It's a good and proper model. It was mentioned about how the ATC benefits from Racing New South Wales paying the prize money. Whilst Racing New South Wales regulates the industry, manages welfare, and collects a wagering revenue, the ATC puts on the racing show in Sydney. Those roles make perfect sense and has made New South Wales racing prosper. As discussed in my submission, there are three well-developed proposals that we did in my tenure to ensure we never had to sell a racecourse: a Canterbury, the JV with Mervack on King Street, the Rosehill Bowling Club site, and the Rosehill Circus site. To add, the off-course training sites at Warwick Farm, there would be close to $1 billion for the ATC and approximately 20,000 dwellings. When I was chair, the decade-long moratorium preventing the sale of Canterbury Racecourse concluded. I told interested parties and members, there was no need to sell any racecourse, as the work had been done to have other options in place and ensure the financial and social viability of the ATC. In 1885, Rosehill Gardens opened for racing, around the same time Wimbledon Centre Court, Sydney Cricket Ground, and Anfield, the home of Liverpool FC began. I doubt any member of these internationally iconic venues would vote to close, as they are key to each of their cities, as Rosehill is to Sydney. Finally, and as noted in my submission, we all come from different paths to the Rosehill topic. Mine is simple. When the ATC and Racing New South Wales work collaboratively and progressively, racing thrives and New South Wales benefits. The results outlined above prove it. Both organisations can be proud of how we worked through COVID and delivered world-class racing and governance. The ATC can and must serve a purpose in establishing thousands of dwellings served by a metro station at Rosehill Racecourse. This will retain both the green and racing space for an exciting future for housing, employment, and social enjoyment in Western Sydney. As one of 12,000 Australian Turf Club members, I want this club to be successful, and I look forward to the day that this issue is solved, and I wish the ATC board well in navigating these final stages.
Thank you very much, Mr. McGrath. Mr. Finnemore, do you wish to make a short opening statement?
Yes, please.
Yes, thank you very much.
I was chairman of the Australian Jockey Club from 2009 until 2011, which was immediately prior to the merger of the STC and AJC, which I've very worked, worked very hard in my role as chairman of the AJC to get to happen. I strongly believe this would be and has been in the best interests of thoroughbred horse racing in New South Wales. I'm an owner and breeder of thoroughbreds principally to race here in New South Wales. Racing and breeding horses is one of the three key things that I do in life after work and family, so it's definitely a core interest. And let me assure you, it's heavily subsidized by my personal financial resources. I only became chairman of the AJC to try to help in negotiating their way through a difficult period they were having. I'm here today with the best interests of the total industry in mind. I feel strongly that Sydney needs two major racecourses, and they need to continue to be Randwick and Rosehill, with Randwick close to the CBD and Rosehill to the centre of the metropolitan area of Sydney. With the progression of racing in New South Wales since its commencement in 1810, there have been significant positive events that have taken place to progress thoroughbred horse racing to where it is today. To achieve what has been achieved in racing has required the involvement and input of a lot of great people, who at times not everyone would have agreed with. And I definitely don't agree with everything that is happening in the administration of racing in New South Wales today. But all those involved in racing have the opportunity of getting involved in the administration and trying to do something about it if they are not happy. But that is not as easy as it used to be, with less directors or committee members being directly appointed by the members. The industry participants have no say in the election of the directors of Racing New South Wales, other than which government is elected, with the directors all being appointed by the minister. I believe that a small number of these should be appointed by the minister, but the majority should be appointed by the members of each of the key participating groups of owners, breeders, and trainers. The ATC board has only seven directors, with three appointed by the minister for racing, and only the other four elected by the members. Thoroughbred horse racing and breeding in Australia has approximately 250,000 people working in the industry, servicing it, with roughly 78,000 full-time equivalent jobs being generated, with around 29,000 of those being in New South Wales. In Australia, there are approximately 120,000 individual owners, with Racing New South Wales saying that they're in the vicinity of 40,000 people from New South Wales, and are all in it for their entertainment. The New South Wales industry is one of the major state participants, and therefore the success of the industry in New South Wales is critical to the future of racing in Australia. To do this, we must have Randwick and Rosehill Racecourses continue into the future. The fun in racing and why we all do it is to be able to attend and participate up close and directly in the events, as was the case last Saturday. So the key locations therefore need to be easily accessible to the maximum number of people possible. By all means, develop any excess land around these racecourses for housing, but please ensure that these two venues stay in place for the future. In fact, when I was chairman of the AJC, John Cornish had plans drawn up for a new modern trainers' complex at Randwick to free up the land on which all the trainers are now currently based on the corner of Anzac Parade and High Street, and build both a shopping centre and apartments on, which would have been, all been both adjacent to the university and the light rail, which should be re-examined as part of your inquiry. We only need to look at the example of what the closure of Harold Park and the relocation of Harness Racing to Menangle Park has done to participation in that industry, to see that we must keep Randwick and Rosehill. One of the key discussions and concerns of STC members with the amalgamation of the AJC and STC was that Canterbury would be sold off and developed for housing. It was never in their wildest thoughts mooted that the sale of Rosehill would be considered. I think that one area of opportunity for savings is that we are paying far too big a prize money to the new major races. I'm supportive of these races. I believe that they have been great for the promotion of the industry here in New South Wales. But I don't believe that the prize money needs to be anywhere near as big as it is to get the same promotional effect. These funds could be spread across many other races and the facilities and participants in the industry across all of New South Wales. It is very easy to spend money, but it's very hard to earn them in the first place. The earlier chairman of Racing New South Wales, Gary Pemberton, Alan Brown, Alan Bell, and John Massara, together with Peter Valandis and their boards, all worked very hard to establish the various funding models that exist today, that made it easy for existing boards to look good in distributing these hard-fought-for funds. We need to be very careful that these funds are spent wisely and not given away too easily. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Finnemore. Let's start with a couple of questions. I guess one of the constant criticisms through this inquiry has been that it's the funding model that effectively has put the ATC in this position. But, Mr. McGrath, your evidence effectively is that that is not the case.
Well, I'm not, we signed approximately seven different agreements. Now, those agreements were all, worked very, very well together. If one has been ended or modified, well, the other six will then naturally have a problem. But when I left the ATC, those seven agreements were all in place. So I'm a very strong believer that the funding model that we agreed to in 2018 does see the ATC through for that agreement period of 15 years.
Thank you.
And one of those agreements was the Wink stand.
Yes.
And as I put in that in my evidence, the Wink stand was a 15-year agreement, and it will be paid off basically within seven or eight years. That money comes from what they call the PGI, which in 2015, there was an establishment of a thing called the Randwick Capital Fund, which is the RCF. That money used to flow straight through to the ATC, the PGI, which is international wagering. They used to flow straight through. It was then captured into a thing called the RCF. Now, I believe the RCF is a good idea. It's for CapEx only, and requires the two CEOs and the two chairmen of Racing New South Wales and the ATC to spend that money. That money had grown to a large number, just on $20 million, because it hadn't been spent. So when I became chair, that's when we spent it on the Wink stand.
Thank you. And, Mr. McGrath, you've outlined in your submission, and with further evidence today as well, that there have been proposals for housing on ATC land progressing for quite some time. I think you estimated in your submission that $250 million could be realised in the next five years. And I think from your evidence today, you've outlined about 20,000 dwellings could be produced from those proposals as well. To that point, there are proposals that could actually see a housing uplift, but also the retention of Rosehill Racecourse and indeed all of the ATC's assets.
Well, there's an interesting photo that goes around, which is often shown in media, and that of Rosehill, and it'll actually show a development. And if you look closely in the background, you'll see the racecourse. Now, that's been shown numerous times in the media. We did a lot of work on that through, I would say, 2016 through to 2018 before I became chair, but I was Chair of Property. The establishment of bringing the bowling club onto the Rosehill Gardens site allowed us-
Sort of a rooftop development, is that what you mean?
Correct. And if you look really carefully, not everyone looks really carefully on this one. If you look really carefully, you'll see the racecourse in the background. The racecourse is in the background. Now, that allows for all that housing along James Roos Drive. At that time when we did that, we hadn't amalgamated with Rosehill Bowling Club, so we didn't own Rosehill Bowling Club. Subsequent to that, we picked up Rosehill Bowling Club as an amalgamation at $0, just brought it across. Then in, I think it was 2020, I did the circus site, taking it from core to non-core land, 75% vote by members. And all of a sudden, we then had not only that location along James Roos Drive, which is the photo I'm talking about in the media, but also the bowling club and the circus site. The other land, the King Street Car Park site, was, we did that in 2016. The ATC was paid a deposit by Mervack at the time. I was there when we signed that off. And that's just been waiting to, which is independent of Rosehill, but it is waiting there for development. It's been waiting there for eight years. And the last one I talked about was the Warwick Farm off-course training sites. If you start from a welfare perspective, that needs to be resolved very, and we've tried to resolve that by moving the off-course trainers on course. So there's trainers out there who are walking their horses 500 metres from an off-course stable, which as Mr. Finnemore would know as well, they've been there for decades. Our goal and our plan, there was a plan, there was a drawn plan, was to bring them onto, onto course. And we can do that, can do that, by putting them on the polo fields out the back. That frees up all that land. Every trainer, I can assure you, that owns land out there, will advocate to sell those properties, every one of them.
And, Mr. Finnemore, in addition to that, you outlined a proposal at Randwick as well, with the training facilities there, or the stabilizing facilities there, and potential for housing uplift right next to a light rail line as well.
Yes, well, that was done because the current training facilities at Randwick need a lot of money spent on them, and haven't been, haven't had that money spent on them for some time. And with John Cornish, I worked, we worked on a, all the plans are there for a new training facility to be built across, straight across from the, from the winning post on the other side of the track, in the side of the hill there, which would freed up all that land that, where the current trainers' facilities are, and allowed that to be developed for, to a shopping centre on the corner, and then apartments all up High Street. And that proposal was, was, all the groundwork was done on it, but never come to fruition because of some complications with zoning, et cetera. And we were relying on the university being more involved in it. But today, there's been a lot of things happened, especially with light rail, et cetera, since then. And it would, all the, all the design and everything's all been done. It's there to be taken out and would add considerably.
And, Mr. Finnemore, do you have any recollection as to how many apartments that could have yielded at all?
No, I'm, I couldn't answer that, because I'd be guessing, and I wouldn't, that's sort of 11 or 12 years ago, and I didn't have the, the information at my hands to go and grab it.
I can, I can add to that. The, the area that Mr. Finnemore was talking about is on Wanjiro, and when we looked at that, I think it was, again, 2016, it was around about an $80 million development, which was obviously prohibitive at the time. But that, that then did dovetail into what Mr. Finnemore was talking about in regards to then doing housing. Predominantly, that housing was student accommodation. That's where we landed. So when we built the multi-deck car park underneath of the day stalls, which was a pretty revolutionary, I think it's the only one in the world where there's cars parked above horse day stalls, but it's an amazing development, that car park has been built to create another two or three levels above, and then we're going to move the admin, right, the ATC admin in, and again, more housing and development could occur. So that's all, that is all drawn. It's all done. It's just a matter of the will to, to actually get it done.
And so I guess what we've heard in this committee so far is that we've had the publicly available figure of $5 billion as a potential benefit to the ATC out of the development. We've also heard some conflicting information. On the low end, down at about $1.6 billion in terms of the return to the ATC, to the high end, where it's been put at up to $25 billion, I think some have outlined. Do you have any views in terms of the value of that to the ATC, particularly when you consider what would be the value to the ATC of retaining the Rosehill site?
I couldn't, I couldn't give you an estimate in terms of what it's worth. All I could give you an estimate is when I was there 18 months ago, the properties that we were looking to develop, we hadn't, we had numbers on each of those properties, which were franked by the same company that's doing it now through Moss and Copper and our other, our other advisors. So the people who are doing it now are the people who are doing it for us. So I couldn't, I couldn't advise in terms of what the value is.
And did that ever contemplate actually a wholesale redevelopment of Rosehill Racecourse?
Never, no.
Thank you. Other questions, the committee? Miss Hurst?
Thank you. And thank you both for coming today. Mr. Finnemore, there's been accusations that Racing New South Wales was inappropriately involved in pushing for the sale of Rosehill Racecourse. Do you believe that Racing New South Wales has become too influential?
Well, I think the way, as I've indicated in my opening statement, that there isn't enough spread of the people that are appointed to the board of Racing New South Wales to get the proper debate and consideration that needs to take place in all organisations.
Thank you. On the first day of this inquiry, Ms. Waterhouse implied that it was time for new leadership within Racing New South Wales. Do you agree with her position there?
I, I think that the change needs to take place in all organisations, but it needs to be appropriate with the whole structure of organisations. And to, for me to give an opinion on that situation, I don't deal directly in there, and I'm an outsider, so I wouldn't have close enough involvement in the last 13 years to be able to say.
So perhaps there should be some sort of government review into the entire sort of structure and looking into the way that directors are appointed? Would that be something you would support?
Definitely.
Thank you. And I've just got a question on animal welfare as well, and the training facilities at the ATC. Do you believe that they're up to the standard that you would like to see? Or do you feel that some of those upgrades have fallen behind?
Well, that's why I was supportive of the changes that were projected to happen or planned to try to happen at Randwick with the new training facilities, with the most modern of facilities, and being funded by the land that it freed up. And to me, it solved several problems. Then it was university housing, but I think today, there's the opportunity for more, wider spread of housing in that situation that would fund that.
And so you feel that, yeah, there does need to be some sort of funding into actually improving those training facilities as they currently stand?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Navar?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. McGrath, you were the ATC Chair between 2018 and 2022.
Mm-hmm.
In 2022, the ATC reported a loss of $7 million in its annual report. It has since undertaken a significant labour force restructuring, and evidence has been provided to the committee that if the ATC breaks even in any given year, that is a good year. Did you have visibility over the significant pressures on the cost base of the ATC during your tenure?
Yeah, of course.
The, the concern has been raised by stakeholders within the industry that thoroughbred racing derives approximately 80% of its revenue from wagering. Given the cost pressures on the ATC, and the substantial risk to being so exposed to wagering revenue, don't you think that it would be appropriate for the board to look at diversifying its revenue base to mitigate against those risks to its organisation?
Are you saying diversifying by taking up the sale of Rosehill?
I'm talking about diversifying its revenue base.
Of course, of course. And I think just if we just come one step back in terms of the FY22 result, there was a $12 million provision that was taken up in 2018. That provision remained unspent. That was a provision that was taken up on the QE2 cladding, the Queen Elizabeth cladding. So after the Grenfell disaster, there was a $12 million provision that we took up to remove all the cladding that was deemed, had a fire order against the club, amongst many other venues. So we stripped pretty much 20 to 30 feet of all the cladding off from the ground up, which meant the fire order at the time. So after taking the $12 million provision in 18, which derived a loss for the year, the expectation was that that money would come back in FY22. It then landed in FY23, so the year after I left. So that's the financial aspect of it. In regards to diversifying the income, there's absolutely no doubt every race club needs to diversify income, everyone. Selling Rosehill would maybe conflict with that, given the amount of non-race day activity that occurs at Rosehill. So you have the caravan and camping show, which is the largest non-race day activity, I would suggest, of pretty much any race club in Australia. They've been there for, I'm going to say, 10 or 12 years, and spend a naughtful amount of money to be there on that venue, and that drives obviously a lot of participation, a lot of customers. In previous times to myself, the Grand Pavilion was built, there's been other structures built at Rosehill, and they all accommodate non-race day activity. The Grand Pavilion can take up to 1,800 people. There's no other, there's no other venue on any of the ATC sites that can take up to 1,800 people in that type of facility. But I agree completely with you. You need to diversify.
Are those alternative streams that you speak of, the non-race day activities, sufficient to overcome the significant exposure risk to racing from having 80% of its revenue derived from wagering income?
They'd have to be. There's no, there's no other avenues other than finding other new revenue streams. There's no other way of doing it. So that has to be non-race day. Selling an asset is not necessarily a revenue stream, but obviously creating new sponsorships, new non-race day activity, and I'm outlining ones that are large, I'm outlining, the smaller ones like weddings. So from that perspective, you're spot on. It has to happen, but I'm not, selling a racecourse is not part of that equation.
Was, was the, was the proposal to develop non-core land, I suppose, in the north-western corner, part of the board's approach to mitigate against the financial risks faced by the ATC?
Oh, correct. But all of that money, as I was explaining with the CapEx that we did spend, so we sold some land at Warwick Farm, we sold other land, we had to take land sales at Randwick to accommodate the metro rail, sorry, the light rail. All of that money is then sunk straight back in. So when we sold the land at Warwick Farm, we actually built a poly track, which was $4 million. We built an Agress track, again, which is all for horse welfare. It's all to make sure horses are looked after well, and the training facilities are as good as they possibly can be. The Agress was around about $4 million. We remediated the course proper. Again, that was around about $3 or $4 million. So all that money that we would get from a sale, a land sale, it is all poured back in.
I suppose the question that I've got, someone that hasn't been following the ATC's ambitions for that north-western corner since 2016, is, it is a proposition that has been pursued since 2016 with no success, despite some very public and private advocacy over seven to eight years. There has been extensive lobbying for a metro station, which that development, I suppose, is predicated on, again, for the last seven to eight years with no success. I suppose what I'm asking is, do you have any information that would lead you to conclude that there will be success for that proposal in the next seven years that there hasn't been in the last seven?
It's a big project. It's been a large project from day to day.
I accept that.
And there's been three primary pieces of land, and then we've purposely then moved land from non-core, sorry, from core to non-core to build out, sorry, to build the ATC. I'm talking like I'm still there, but to build the ATC with that asset base by taking the bowling club, by taking the, by taking the circus site, getting 75% of members' vote is a difficult process, right? So again, these are all planned out over a long, long period of time. I do agree with you, though, 20, it has taken long, too long.
I accept that, Mr. McGrath, but what I'm, what I'm saying is that it is a plan that has not substantially changed in the last six to seven years. It's a plan that's not progressed in the last six to seven years and left unchanged. Would you expect it to progress in the next six or seven years if it hasn't in the last seven?
It hasn't changed a lot, but I would say that we've created more opportunity to make the value greater.
I've got further questions, Chair, but-
Sure. I'll go to Mr. Fang, and we can go back to you.
Thank you. Mr. Finnemore, you've been involved in this for quite a period of time. You were Chair of the AJC from 09 to 11, correct?
Yes.
Now, just in relation to the line of questioning that the Honourable Bob Navar has just put to Mr. McGrath, he's indicated that where there's perhaps financial difficulties, you either need to generate more income, or he's indicating that the other way of attracting a revenue stream would be to- or he's indicating that the other way of attracting a revenue stream would be to sell more assets. Do you agree that those are the only two ways you can, I guess, generate an income there?
I agree.
I think there's more ways than one. And when you're running a business, you've got to also look at costs.
Yep.
And I mentioned that maybe the major prize money is too great. Could be spread across New South Wales and the facilities.
Yep.
But these are all just opinions.
Yeah.
The other thing that, you know, there's plenty of projects in New South Wales that have been in the making for ten and fifteen years trying to get through the authorities. And they've been driven by people that are making their money out of it, not clubs. And the people that work in clubs aren't specialists in that situation. So I could point out a couple of projects that have been going longer than the A T C has been based to get approval and/or to get even on exhibition. So it takes a lot of effort and a lot of skills for people to get some of these projects through.
Yep.
And that is a deterrent, and especially when you don't have the people with the skills that Mr. McGrath has and that time Mr. Cornish was on, they're both in that skill base. But to get them through to the process. But the key thing that we were looking at at Randwick was to be able to get the money to upgrade the training facilities.
Yep.
And that was to come out of the other. And there would have been a lot more money, long term, come back to the club from the shopping centre and the student accommodation in conjunction with the university. So some of these things, you know, if you had the resource and were put to the test, they might come, but they won't come in five minutes.
Yep. So you've been, I guess, outside of your industry experience with thoroughbreds, you've been reasonably successful in business as well. Is that a fair assumption?
Oh, well, I'm still in business, but I did go broke in nineteen seventy nine, so.
So, no, no. I guess some of your learnings about being successful in business is you don't sell the main asset that is, I guess, attractive to your core business. Would that be, you know, a reasonable assumption?
Very much so.
Now, do you find it somewhat hypocritical that the very person that's advocating for no government privatisation is advocating for the A T C to sell off their major asset, effectively privatising a major asset in order to fix a bottom line? Is that not somewhat hypocritical from the Labour members opposite? I've just thrown the ball up. I've just thrown the ball up in the air. Feel free to swing away if you like.
Well, I would think so in any core business. Any business where you have the core assets that derive the income for running the business from. And Rosehill and Randwick, in my opinion, are the core assets for thoroughbred racing in New South Wales and are major contributors to racing in Australia. But they are the core assets. And then you've got to have them and everything else around them. Then you work on how you maximise them to leave the core assets in place to be able to run your core business, and that's thoroughbred racing.
Thank you. I think I've got the answer I wanted.
Thank you very much. Mr. Latham.
Thank you to both the ex-chairs for your evidence today and also the insight into the very careful and methodical way in which you both developed various commercial propositions and real estate sales up to the point where they could be executed. To both of you, have you been surprised at the way in which the A T C has handled this Rosehill sale to make it so rushed, amateurish, at various times keeping the board in the dark, really trying to advance a thought bubble? It stands in stark contrast to how you did things in your time, doesn't it?
My answer is yes.
I think it's been rushed. Yes, I agree with that.
Yeah, in your time, if a line manager came to you and said, I've had some meeting with some government officials and we can get a metro if we do certain things at Rosehill, would you have sought that in writing to make sure it was a firm government commitment rather than just rushing off to act on it straight away?
It would have come through the necessary levels in terms of, it would have come through into the executive. So we had a property executive. And then I would have picked that up through the C E O. So the C E O wouldn't have presented it to me unless it had been franked by that process.
Frank, do you mean there'd been government verification that this was the position, not just a report back from a couple of meetings?
Look, I could understand why there'd be a conversation. I get that. But if it was going to be something a little bit more stronger, I'd want the C E O to present it to me.
Especially involving your sale of your major asset.
Agree. No, I agree with that.
And furthermore, if a meeting was to be organised with the Premier, would you have gone as the chair and the C E O would also attend rather than sending the line manager in question?
The three of us would have gone, and we did that on other processes. In terms of other locations, we have actually done that.
Ethically, what's your judgement of the A T C sending Mr. McMahon alone to meet with the Premier? Presumably because they thought he could exercise some political influence given his long-term relationship with the Premier.
Well, I can only, well, I wasn't there, but I can only talk for my relationship with Steve or Steve McMahon over that period. I found him to be professional, trustworthy. I never had an issue with Steve.
Would you have sent him just by himself or you would have gone? You're saying your evidence is you would have gone as chair.
Look, I wouldn't send him because I wouldn't have been aware. But if he was going to go, I may not have gone to that sort of conversation, but I certainly would expect the C E O to go.
Right. And what were the fiduciary duties that you had as a director, all directors have? What's the legal status of the A T C under the Corporations Act and the responsibilities you're legally obliged to discharge in this circumstance of selling the major asset?
I haven't got the information exactly in front of me, but I know what it'd be in my role as a director of the company that I own fifty percent of. It would be to ensure that the board was fully communicated with and it would be a board decision how we progress it.
Before anything was done, before meetings were organised with government and there was an attempt to organise a unsolicited proposal?
We might have discussions to get more information, to be able to give all that was available to the directors.
Right. And would that include a firm valuation of the site in writing from a credible economic forecaster or land valuer? You'd do that as part of your due diligence?
To me, not necessarily. Paper won't refuse ink. And you can get anything on a bit of paper that people aren't putting a price behind. Valuations, in my thing, get back to the assumptions that are used. And, you know, if you've got approval compared to the assumptions that you're just thinking about it, they're dramatically different. But I'm a truck driver, not a property person. So Mr. McGrath should.
I'm not necessarily a property person, but I would say that on a monthly basis, we would have a property subcommittee. So none of this would be missed through the property subcommittee. It would come through that. So nothing would be rushed because everything would be known within those four weeks. And all the main players on any of these property topics would be in that room, including Moss and Copper, who are our advisers. Now, I brought them on in, again, I think it was twenty sixteen. They've been nothing but exceptional all the way through. But all of that would have been picked up via the subcommittees.
Right. And Mr. McGrath, you'd be seeking board approval at every significant step of the way.
A significant step. Conversation in that subcommittee would always rise through to the board each month, correct?
And if you sent a line manager to meet with government on that day and you also had a board meeting that day, would you tell the board that the organisation's approached government for the sale of this major asset?
It would come through in the actions of the subcommittee.
Right. And if the chair doesn't do that, are there any problems under the nature of the A T C's incorporation under the Corporations Act?
I think they just need to make that judgement. I couldn't tell you that.
Right. That's a matter of legal advice.
Yep, correct.
Mr. Finneymore?
Same question.
Yeah.
I would be, I wouldn't be sure in that situation. I know what I'd do. I can only say what I'd do. And I would, communication equals cooperation as far as I'm concerned. And that's one of the things that I live by. And that's what I tried to do through my period of chairman of the A J C. And through that period, there was plenty of people that weren't necessarily happy with the merger of the two clubs. And in that process, we communicated openly with the people at the S T C and with my directors, and that's how we got the outcome in the end. So how different people do things. Mine is honest and open communication to get the cooperation they need to facilitate those things to happen.
Right. And at what stage would you have involved the membership, given that this can be a complete waste of time if the membership? If it became known to you that the membership were hostile to the proposal and it's a complete waste of time to advance it, would you have gone to a membership vote to get it sorted?
Yeah, look, I can understand, well, ultimately it would go to a membership vote under this proposal. But I can understand the sensitivity of where the board and the exec were on this. I thought the forums were a very clever way of doing it at the start. It picked up pretty quickly that it was fairly hostile, but that's a small number of members that were in attendance as opposed to the vast majority of the twelve thousand. It was probably about a hundred and fifty, so it probably picked up the tone. But I think stopping after the second forum was an error and that's exacerbated these problems going forward. I would have liked to have seen a panel of pro and against and members being able to listen to that and then maybe do a sensitivity vote online and just get a bit of a feel of ten to twenty percent of the group. I think that would have been a quicker, clever, simpler way of doing it and then go forward after that.
Yeah. Do you know any members who support the sale?
Not yet, no.
No, not yet. Mr. Finneymore?
I haven't been talking openly to people about my opinion on the subject or asking people for their opinion. I felt that by the time it got to that, people would make up their mind. And for me, there would need to be a lot more information available before that decision could be made.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nevers.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. McGrath.
What else do you want to privatise?
Mr. McGrath, just put a proposition to you. It's not the role of a commercial organisation like the A T C to resolve the government's housing problems, is it?
No.
And it's not the job of governments to provide infrastructure to commercial organisations like the A T C to provide a private windfall gain.
No.
Or development.
Well, other than Randwick being on Crown Land, but I agree with you, yeah.
Would you agree then that in this context that we are in, the best thing is for a proposal that provides a mutually beneficial outcome to government and the A T C?
Agreed.
Thank you. Mr. Finneymore, just a quick question from me. And just coming back to Mr. Fang's line of questioning. If a business was singularly deriving an income from a revenue source that is under significant regulatory threat, it wouldn't be remarkable, would it, for a business to explore alternative revenue streams, including looking at restructuring its asset base if it would provide for long-term financial security of the business in totality?
Please use the term asset recycling.
It wouldn't be remarkable to at least look at restructuring the asset base.
The business mightn't be in place if you take away one of the core assets that has that industry participating. So in a business situation, there's core things that you've got to have no matter what. And this would be taking away one of those and you'd have to find another way, in my opinion.
He's asking you to recycle assets, Mr. Finneymore. I think I've said that somewhere before.
Mr. Finneymore, I guess in a sense, having formerly been the chair of the A J C, looking on the S T C, Rosehill would have been seen as the premier asset of that organisation, wouldn't it?
Well, as I said, that was concerned by the members and the directors of the S T C that when the merger took place, that Canterbury would be sold. And one of the undertakings that was given that it wouldn't be even considered for ten years. But there was never any discussion or thought. I don't think anybody dreamed that the consideration would be to sell Rosehill.
Mr. Tudor.
In the course of your time as chair, did you ever consider the Brick Pit at Olympic Park as an appropriate site to have a racecourse?
It never came up.
Have you ever looked at that site? Since this has been the subject of discussion, what would be your view in relation to a racecourse at the Brick Pit?
I don't know the site well enough, but it never came up as an option.
Mr. Finneymore, have you ever examined that site?
Well, through a business situation that I was trying to do a development in that part of Sydney at the same time as the Olympic Games was being talked about, the facilities for it, we ended up with a restriction, of course, of a green frog. And that same green frog was at the Brick Pit that stopped some of the development taking place for the home wish Olympic facilities. And so my understanding, that's all of my involvement. It wouldn't have got very far because I'd have said that the advisementalists will hit us on the head because of my experience, personal experience that I had working through all that.
And in terms of the diversification policy which Mr. Nevers suggested to, would the acquisition of a site or at the Brick Pit, would that represent diversification in your view?
Well, if that's put up to replace Rosehill, I don't, no, I don't see how that would work, no.
And just to that point as well, so Racing New South Wales has said that there needs to be another Group One racetrack identified in Sydney. From your experience, could Warwick Farm be upgraded to a Group One racetrack?
We might. The work that we did to create almost a centre of excellence at Rosehill, sorry, at Warwick Farm, allowed that to occur. Now, the way we did that was to, I took an approach that was coming from the inside out, is a good way of putting it. And that was doing the training tracks because it hadn't been done for quite some time, creating the A grass, which hadn't been done for a couple of decades, and then doing the, and then doing the polytrack, which was a brand new facility. Then we would merge, move out onto the facility because, as Mr. Latham's correctly said, that facility needs work. There's no question about that. We did do some work and in February twenty twenty two, we did make an announcement, which was all backed, all funded, all backed, was to pull up the track and start again, which was a six million dollar project then. It'd probably be about ten or twelve today. And that was going to be done jointly with Racing New South Wales. And that was in the media. I know they had some issues in mid twenty twenty three, just local council kind of issues. And we were then going to supplement that money by redoing all the public and member facilities. So I do believe that Warwick Farm could serve that purpose if it needed to, even to have a third track, which would allow us to take Group One races back to Western Sydney, which I was a big advocate for. We spent a lot of money at Warwick Farm. May doesn't look like we did, but we spent a lot of money at Warwick Farm.
Just not on the fence, as we heard earlier.
Fence is, well, the fence was a topic of debate in regards to the agreement with English at that time, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. And Mr. Finneymore, your perspectives in terms of Warwick Farm?
My opinion is different.
Yep.
In any business, you have to provide for maintenance as well. And one of the things in racing that when the tracks have to be maintained, and that's progressively over the years, that you need a long period of time to upgrade racetracks. And I think Mr. McGrath said six months or longer. And if the weather conditions don't go with it, you need longer. So I see the need for the three racetracks so that when the maintenance is, needs to be done, that you can operate your core business in that situation. It may not need as much money to be spent, but it needs money spent on it and you need to continue with Warwick Farm. And it wouldn't be able to replace, in my opinion, and in my opinion, it wouldn't be able to replace Rosehill.
So we'd put in a process that Warwick Farm would be done first. And Mr. Finneymore is spot on. It would take six to twelve months. Warwick Farm would be done first. Once that was up and running, Rosehill would be done. Then Randwick was going to be done. I'm talking about the course proper. So that was all in process. And as I said, it was announced in February twenty twenty two in the media. And as far as I was aware, we were going to move forward with it.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Thank you, Mr. Finneymore, for your time today. Unfortunately, our time has expired, but I do appreciate you both coming today. I'm not sure if you took any questions on notice. I don't think you did. But if I'm mistaken, the secretary will be in touch with you. Thank you for your evidence today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And thank you for making the time to give evidence before the inquiry today. If you can start by stating your name, your position title, and then either taking the oath or the affirmation, please.
Thank you, Chair. James Bernard Cullen, I'm the Chief of Staff to the Premier of New South Wales, Chris Mintz. And I'd prefer to take the oath.
Yes, indeed.
I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Mr. Cullen, would you like to make a short opening statement for the committee at all?
That's fine.
Thank you very much. We'll open for questions. I'll kick off. Mr. Cullen, when did you first become aware of the proposal to develop Rosehill Racecourse?
I first became aware that the ATC were considering bringing a formal proposal, if you like, to the government. Initially in a conversation, a short conversation Steve McMahon had with me on the 26th of October, is my recollection. And then obviously at a, at a meeting with the Premier on the 30th of October, 2023.
Thank you very much. So the 26th was when you first became aware from Mr. McMahon. How did he phrase that at the time?
Look, it was a very brief conversation and the purpose of the call from Mr. McMahon's perspective was to request a meeting. And he made it clear in that brief conversation that it included ATC were actively considering bringing a proposal to government to redevelop Rosehill Racecourse. And he had some related questions and basically wanted to get a sense from the government about government interest. So, yeah, that was the purpose of it, securing a meeting with the Premier.
Thank you. And then following that, you identified a time in the Premier's diary for Mr. McMahon to meet with him.
For the 30th of October, that's correct.
Yep. And in terms of that, did you speak to the Premier before establishing that meeting? Or did you just slot that into the diary?
I don't recall. It wouldn't have surprised me if I just slotted it in the diary. I think obviously context is important here, Chair. The government had on the record, both in opposition and in government, a long stated objective to maximise opportunities when it comes to housing density and housing particularly linked with public transport and specifically the Metro West, as flagged by the government when it introduced the, announced the Metro West Review in April 2023. So unsurprisingly, the government was very interested in proposals that would have the benefit of bringing online additional housing for Sydney. So noting the significance of a proposal in that order, yeah, I put a meeting in the diary for the 30th of October.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. And Mr. Cullen, were you present at that meeting as well?
I was.
And was it just you, the Premier and Mr. McMahon at that meeting?
It was.
And prior to that meeting, did you seek any advice from any bureaucrats with respect to the unsolicited proposals process or the like?
Yeah, look, I think, I think you get a little bit of context would be important here too, Chair. The unsolicited proposal process obviously commenced further down the track. And I think you've had evidence before you about how that process was kicked off, including evidence from officials in the Premier's Department and the Cabinet Office about pre-lodgement meetings that can occur. So no one was talking about an unsolicited proposal around the 26th of October or the 30th of October. That just wasn't language which was being used. Obviously, that came later on when advice was sought by the Cabinet Office and further engagements at that point happened with the ATC. So what was clear in the meeting, the 30th of October, was ATC were considering basically bringing a formal proposal to government that included redevelopment of the Rosehill Racecourse.
Thank you. And following that meeting that you had with Mr. McMahon, what actions did you take?
I basically quickly handed off to Will Murphy, who was then the Acting Secretary of the Cabinet Office. I asked him if he was the appropriate contact to be able to deal with ATC from that point on. He came back to me, it was either on the spot or pretty quickly to indicate that he was. And then I basically gave him Steve McMahon's contact details and my understanding, as they obviously conversed after that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fang?
Thank you. Mr. Cullen, were you aware prior to your conversation with Mr. McMahon on the 26th of October that the Premier and he were friends?
Yes.
You were aware?
Yes.
Okay. So in that context then, did the Premier indicate to you prior to that or around the time of that phone call that he had had any conversation prior to that with Mr. McMahon about this proposal?
No.
So the first you became aware of it was when Mr. McMahon called you seeking a meeting? The Premier didn't say, you're going to get a call from somebody about this, just slotted in my diary? The Premier didn't raise that at all?
No.
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 So, so you were aware that they were friends. You then get a phone call from him. Did he say in that phone call, hey, it's Steve, I want to meet up with Chris. We, you know, we're old mates. By the way, I've got this conversation I want to have about this proposal. Was it that sort of conversation or was it, Mr. Cullen, you know, I want to meet with the Premier?
It was closer to the latter. Again, it was perfunctory. It was, he made it clear that there was a consideration at ATC's end to bring a proposal to government and basically wanted to have a, a meeting with the Premier to discuss that, yeah.
So, so it was more along the, the formal route than a friendly route, is how you would say that conversation went?
Yeah.
So in that case then, is it normal that somebody who makes a formal request to meet with the Premier gets to meet with the Premier within four days?
It's not, it's not unusual. I think it's, I mean, to be frank. If I could just finish, if I could just finish. There'd be members of the coalition who would have demanded a meeting with or requested a meeting with the Premier and got it on the day they asked. It does happen from time to time. Sometimes it can take longer, sometimes it's shorter. But I think that context is really important, Mr. Wang, the, Mr. Fang, sorry.
Oh, you're going to make a real somewhere champion now.
Sorry, Mr. Fang, I've been talking to Steve Camper too long.
Yeah, you want to avoid doing that.
Yeah, sorry about that. The, the government had these clear housing targets and a strategy linked with public transport. So the significance of that was obviously for me putting in a meeting sooner rather than later.
Okay. Do you typically keep an eye over the Premier's disclosures?
Yes.
You do? When the Premier files his meeting disclosures, do you, do you usually take care of those? Or, you know, does the Premier do them directly?
I would have a role in overseeing that and basically in line with the record-keeping requirements of the government, including the diary disclosure process, again, which we inherited from the former government. We comply in the same way.
So you've admitted to me that you knew that he and the Premier were friends prior to that phone call on the 26th of October. You were aware that when you took that phone call that they were friends. Why did you list it as a meet and greet, given that you knew that they already knew each other?
Again, I, my view is we fully complied with the record-keeping requirements, including diary disclosures. And a summary in terms of purpose of the meeting is fairly standard. And including the sort of summary or high-level summary that was former members of the coalition government also provided as well.
Putting that aside, your government came into power saying that they were going to have greater transparency and accountability. You've listed this meeting as a meet and greet where the Premier met with a friend to discuss a potentially $5 billion plus housing proposal and an adjustment to the metro station. You've listed it as a meet and greet. Do you believe that you have honoured what the Premier made before coming into government, which is greater accountability by listing that meeting as a meet and greet?
Point of order.
Yes, Mr. Neber?
Mr. Fang is asking the witness an opinion, which I would suggest is not in order in accordance with paragraph 10 of the procedural fairness resolution.
Okay, I think Mr. Fang can word it in a way that it would fall, but I would ask him to reword.
Do you believe that the Premier has listed that meeting appropriately, given that he was friends with Mr. McMahon? Given that a major $5 billion plus proposal was discussed? And it certainly was not simply a meet and greet?
Mr. Fang, I'm very comfortable with the record-keeping including in this instance as well.
How many other times?
I mean, I think, can I just make a point just further to that? We're talking about a meeting that occurred on the 30th of October. The reason why the committee's talking about that is because of the record-keeping requirements and the fact that the Premier, Premier's office disclosed the meeting on the 30th of October.
Well, no, Mr. Cullen. Had the proposal not gone ahead, we would never have been aware that this meet and greet was actually to discuss a $5 billion plus housing proposal for Rosehill because it was listed as a meet and greet. So I contend that what you're saying is incorrect. And I'm asking how many other times have simple meet and greets discussed major infrastructure projects such as this that haven't been fully disclosed in the Premier's meeting logs?
Yes, Mr. Neber?
That question's not.
It is entirely in order, Mr. Neber. Please explain to me how you believe it's out of order.
This inquiry.
It is absolutely within the terms of reference.
Look, I, I think, I think with respect, in terms of how this meeting is characterised and whether meetings would similarly be characterised, I think is a fair question for the witness to answer within the terms of reference.
Yeah, Mr. Fang, I'm happy to take that on notice in terms of other meetings. I would, I would just make the general point that, and again, Mr. Draper, when he was, he's given evidence regarding these sorts of pre-lodgement meetings. It's, there is nothing untoward with stakeholders seeking out preliminary views from government before they then go and undertake the work that often is involved with the more formal unsolicited proposal process.
I don't believe that's for you to determine, Mr. McCullen, but I'll pass over.
Mr. Tudorhope or Mr. Latham? Mr. Latham?
Yeah, Mr. Cullen, just on this matter, given that no one in politics lists meet and greet with someone they've known for 20 years, why wasn't it listed as a meeting with Steve McMahon to discuss the sale of Rosehill?
Look, I already, I refer you to the evidence I've already provided.
Well, I'm asking why it wasn't. You haven't answered that question as to why it wasn't listed for what it was. An honest assessment that it was a meeting with Steve McMahon to discuss the sale of Rosehill.
The, we fully complied with the record-keeping requirements, including the diary disclosure obligations. I've already given that evidence and I'm comfortable with it.
Right. In the document that was prepared and given to the Cabinet Office, mention was made of ICAC's.
Mr. Latham, which document are you referring to?
ICAC's Guidelines for Direct Negotiations and Direct Dealings. And at page 15 there, it says, as a general rule, corrupt or unethical officials try to avoid making records that could be used to expose their conduct. Are you aware of that ICAC guideline?
I've seen that you've referred to that before. And that, that guideline has basically been incorporated in the New South Wales Government's USP guidelines as well. Yes, I'm aware of that.
Well, under that guideline, why wouldn't you honestly disclose that the meeting on the 30th of October was with Steve McMahon for the sale of Rosehill?
I refer you to the evidence I've already provided.
Right. Did the Premier approve of that, approve and tick off that listing of meet and greet with an ATC?
The, it followed the normal process again, as evidence I've already given, the normal process that the office undertakes when it comes to preparing and submitting diary disclosure, a diary disclosure.
But that would obviously involve the approval of the Premier. He must have some role.
We, we comply with the processes outlined.
Which involves the Premier, yes?
I refer you to the relevant Premier's memo.
Right. And can you help the committee here with the conflicting evidence about the nature of the meeting on the 30th of October? Where Mr. McMahon told us that the outcome was that the Premier said that the Cabinet Office would come back to the ATC with its suggestion on the most appropriate process for selling Rosehill. But in answer to a supplementary question at budget estimates asked on the same topic, the Premier said that, no, that wasn't the case. He was advised, no.
Look, I don't have the, that second document you're referring to. I don't know, you're paraphrasing it or if you want to give me a copy of it. But I don't, I don't see, I don't see anything, anything inconsistent there at all.
Okay. Well, the Premier was asked, did you tell Mr. McMahon on the 30th of October that would you get the Cabinet Office to come up with a process for selling Rosehill? The Premier answered, I am advised, no.
Yeah, well, I think you've, that particular question, which sounds like that's a question you've put on notice.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that's your characterisation of it and obviously.
No, 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 it's not a characterisation of anything, it's a question. Did the Premier tell Mr. McMahon?
Mr. Latham and Mr. Cullen, just, point of order's been raised by Mr. Neber, I'll hear it.
Chair, under the procedural fairness resolution with respect to courtesy to the witness, Mr. Cullen ought to be afforded the opportunity to complete his answer before being redirected or being asked a new question.
Okay, I'll uphold the point of order. Mr. Latham, if you can put the question to Mr. Cullen and then Mr. Cullen, if you can answer, thank you.
Well, Mr. Cullen was disputing the nature of the question. The Premier was asked, did you tell Mr. McMahon on the 30th of October that you would get the Cabinet Office to come up with a process for selling Rosehill? To which the Premier replied, I am advised, no. Presumably advised himself of what he said and the answer was no. In evidence to this committee, when on the same point, Mr. McMahon's given sworn evidence that at the end of the meeting, the Premier said he would get the Cabinet Office to provide advice on how to proceed with the process for the sale of Rosehill. So who, who's correct in their recollection, the Premier or Mr. McMahon?
I don't think those two, that they're, they are not inconsistent, those two you put. With, with the question on notice, you've put a particular configuration of what you said is the outcome of the meeting. And obviously the Premier's response to that is no. And, and Mr. McMahon is talking about what he said was the outcome from the meeting, which is his view about the outcome of the meeting. As I've already given evidence about how Mr. McMahon was basically handed off to the Cabinet Office by me after the meeting. So there is no inconsistency there, Mr. Latham.
You're not giving honest evidence here, are you, Mr. Cullen?
Point of order.
Point of order by Mr. Neber?
That can't be an honest answer to a clear contradiction placed before this committee.
Mr. Latham, there's a point of order from Mr. Neber. Mr. Neber?
Point of order, Chair. That's not courteous to the witness, it's an adverse reflection on the witness.
I'd say it's an accurate reflection, but anyway.
He's not giving honest evidence.
Well.
Haranguing witnesses is not part of our.
Okay, I'll rule on it. Mr. Latham, you're entitled to ask a question as to whether their evidence is correct or not or honest. But making an imputation of the witness would be outside the procedural fairness resolution.
Will you reconsider your answer?
No. No, I absolutely stand by it. Your, that question that you provided is your, that is your summary of the meeting and meeting outcome, to which the Premier has said, no. And Mr. McMahon, and then you've referred to evidence Mr. McMahon has given. So, no, the, obviously that preamble in your question is absolutely incorrect.
So what was your take on what the outcome of the meeting was?
Well, Mr. Tudorhope, I've already given evidence to that effect.
No, no, but tell us in your words now, what was the outcome of the meeting?
That I, I would go away and talk to the Cabinet Office, obviously in this case, Will Murphy, who was the Acting Secretary, and seek his advice about him being, was he the, he or someone else the best contact point to be able to engage with the ATC, given that they were going through a process to put a formal proposal to government? And then Mr. Murphy obviously confirmed that, yes, he was. And, and he then got in contact with Steve McMahon after I gave him Steve McMahon's contact details, so.
So what, what are you answering then? Did the Premier tell Mr. McMahon at that meeting that he'd get the Cabinet Office to come up with a process for selling Rosehill? Which is exactly what you went and did.
Mr. Latham, the Premier has said no. I completely reject the way you've configured that meeting about somehow the government has concocted a process to support the selling off of Rosehill. The only person who's talking about the selling off of Rosehill is you.
Well, Chair, I'm asking a question here that consistently.
So I reject, again, I, I absolutely reject the preamble of your question.
Well, Chair, on a point of order, the witness is not answering the question directly. He's rejecting something that wasn't said. He has an obligation under the Evidence Act, subject to severe penalty, to answer the question directly. Did the Premier at the meeting on the 30th of October?
Tell Mr. McMahon to get the Cabinet Office.
Mr. Latham, you raised it as a point of order. Mr. Neber to the point of order.
Mr. Cullen has answered the same question three or four times over. You cannot keep asking the same question and expect a different response. He has answered the question truthfully, to the best of his recollection. And it might assist the witness if the document were tabled.
I think, I think we are at a debating point at the moment. I'll allow Mr. Latham to put the question to Mr. Cullen, it is a lawful question. And Mr. Cullen can answer it as he says fit.
Yeah, well, it's a simple yes or no. Did the Premier at the meeting on the 30th of October tell Mr. McMahon he'd get the Cabinet Office to come up with a process for selling Rosehill?
And what, and what was the Premier's answer to your question, which you, when you asked him?
That's not what I'm asking you, Mr. Cullen. That's not what I'm asking you.
The answer is no.
Your answer is no.
Yes, that the Premier's answer is the right one, is correct, no.
But contrary to exactly what you've told us was the conclusion of the meeting. So why did you go and get the advice from Cabinet Office?
One question at a time, and the question is from Mr. Tudorhope.
It's not.
Is that contrary to what you have just told us?
Mr. Tudorhope, with respect, Mr., I'm listening to the question. And Mr. Latham is reading out a question that he's put on notice already to the Premier, that the Premier has responded to. It is Mr. Latham's summation of that meeting and meeting outcome. It is not the government, it's not the Premier's summation, and it's certainly not mine. So I do reject that. And that is inconsistent with the question and answer given by Mr. McMahon.
Can I just clarify with you?
I've got every right to put that.
Can I just clarify with you? You've told us today that at the conclusion of the meeting, at the conclusion of the meeting, you were told to go away and prepare a process for the purposes of progressing the proposal. You've told us that, haven't you?
That's different to the question Mr. Latham just put, Mr. Tudorhope.
Have you told us that?
This is a different question now.
Have you told us that?
Can you repeat the question, please?
You've told us that at the outcome of the meeting, Mr. McMahon and you were told to go away and consult with the Cabinet Office for the purposes of establishing the best way of progressing the proposal.
Yes.
Right, correct. Now, this is the question you were asked. This is the question you were asked.
By whom, Mr. Tudorhope?
Sorry, not you were asked, that the Premier was asked in the supplementary question. Don't characterise this as Mr. Latham's interpretation, just having heard what you've told us. Do you, did you tell?
interpretation, just having heard what you've told us. Do you, did you tell Mr. McMann on the 30th of October you would get the Cabinet Office to come up with a process for selling Rosehill? Bearing in mind what you've just told us was the conclusion, was that the conclusion you agree with?
Mr. Tudor Hope and Mr. Latham, the language of selling Rosehill is not one I accept. I've already given evidence that following the meeting with Mr. McMann, I undertook to basically hand off to Mr. Murphy and that would then follow a process involving ATC, putting formally to government a proposal which included the redevelopment of Rosehill Racecourse. I've already given that evidence and confirmed that.
Would you agree with me that that answer is misleading then?
Mr. Tudor Hope, I don't have to agree with the preamble in your question. And that's, that's the objection I've got with that and what Mr. Latham put as well.
You seem quite agitated, Mr. Cullen.
On a point of order, the witness is rejecting the language of selling Rosehill and he's previously said that the meeting was about selling Rosehill. We should deal with this witness for misleading and not being honest and directing his answers.
These are matters that should be debated in a deliberative meeting and not by haranguing a witness.
Well, these are important matters. When a witness comes here under oath and is lead.
Let us, let us, let us ask questions to the witness and let us have answers from the witness.
I've got one more question. Why did you go and contact the Cabinet Office out of the meeting on the 30th of October?
The meeting of the 30th of October, Mr. McMann made clear that ATC was considering putting, formally putting in a government proposal to redevelop Rosehill Racecourse. I undertook to hand off Mr. McMann, given the significance of what that would be, the most appropriate contact at official level, which is why I contacted Mr. Murphy.
And the Premier agreed with that course of action?
Yes.
Thank you.
So how long have you known Mr. McMann?
Mr. Tudor Hope, look, probably, obviously, it's a matter of record that Mr. McMann was a member of the Labour Party. So I probably encountered him a few times over the last 15 years in various forms.
Would you consider him a friend?
An acquaintance.
An acquaintance?
Yeah. We don't hang out socially.
So you haven't been to any social events that he's been at?
Not that I recall.
So when he rings you up with this proposal and had a discussion with you in relation to the proposal, you knew what he was coming to see you about, did you not?
He was talking about, again, it was a brief conversation to line up the meeting which followed on the 30th. But he talked about ATC entering into a process to bring, if you like, a formal proposal that included the redevelopment of Rosehill Racecourse. I obviously, I obviously know Rosehill Racecourse is a large racing track in Western Sydney and that is a significant proposal.
So you knew that that was the purpose of why he wanted to see the Premier?
That's right.
So you'd have to agree with me, would you not, that to put in the diary a meet and greet was not the purpose of the meeting, was it?
Mr. Chair, I think we've done, we've gone over this in terms of the diary disclosure. I've put evidence on the record and I stand by it.
But you'd agree with me that the purpose of the meeting was not a meet and greet, was it?
Mr. Tudor, you're questioning what was put in the diary disclosure for the 30th of October. I told you. I completely stand by it and it's consistent, to be frank, with the kinds of returns and diary disclosures that you in particular, but other members of the former coalition put as well. It's the convention that we've followed.
I'm glad you've gone and looked at my diary disclosures, Mr. Cullen, but that's fine. But what I would put to you, that there is a significant difference in what you knew in your mind, you knew what the purpose of the meeting was and what you entered into the diary. There's a significant difference between those two things, is there not?
Look, I just, I completely reject it. We've met the record-keeping requirements here, including the diary disclosure obligations that are outlined. You've asked questions of Miss Boyd through the context of either estimates or this as well. Completely comfortable with what we've done.
Well, there was no other person in the room, was there, during the course of this discussion?
The meeting on the 30th of October.
Beside you and the Premier and Mr. McMann?
That's correct.
How long did the meeting last?
It was probably over in, it was probably 15 minutes, more than 15 minutes.
What level of detail did was provided? Did Mr. McMann suggest to you that the, that the number of potential dwellings which could be the subject?
Not that I recall.
Well, not that you recall?
Yeah, not that I recall.
Did he suggest to you the potential value of the sale to the ATC?
Not that I recall.
Well, what do you recall that he said to you?
That ATC were, I suppose, going through the process, early stages of considering putting a formal proposal to government that included the redevelopment of Rosehill Racecourse, obviously linked to, in their mind, a station to be located at Rosehill as part of the Metro West development. It was basically that. It wasn't much more detailed than that.
So was it along the lines of Mr. McMann saying, "If you can deliver a station at Rosehill, we would be in a position to consider the sale of Rosehill"? Is that the conversation?
Well, again, Mr. Chair, the language put by Mr. Tudor Hope about selling Rosehill, that's not, that's not within the scope of the USP process or the MOU that was announced by the government on 7th of December. To be frank, that's why I've had a problem with these lines of questioning. But do you want to repeat the question again in terms of the meeting, Mr. Tudor?
Well, did he put to you a propos, along the lines of, "If you are prepared to deliver a railway station to Rosehill, then we would be open to considering a redevelopment of the Rosehill Racecourse"?
Yeah, look, probably not those words specifically, but yes, it was.
Well, what words do you remember specifically?
I'll hear the point of order.
The witness is answering the question. Just let him conclude.
It is a little bit of to and fro, but I think it's within the realms of reasonableness at the moment.
It was absolutely, the context of the meeting was, the government was looking at its position when it comes to Metro West and potentially locating additional stations in Western Sydney. So, yeah, yes, it was. It was clear the context was ATC was considering tabling a formal proposal with government about redeveloping Rosehill Racecourse linked to a station at Rosehill.
Did Mr. McMann give any background information, like he'd met with the Planning Secretary the day before, who'd advised that the 40,000 dwellings would justify a metro?
Not that I recall, Mr. Latham.
And in Mr. McMann ending up in the Premier's diary, did you ask the question, "Steve, why is the ATC sending you and not the Chair and the CEO"?
I didn't ask that question.
Was it obvious to you that Mr. McMann was being sent by the ATA because he was most likely, so ATC, ATC, because he was most likely to exercise influence over the Premier?
Oh, well, again, I completely reject that characterisation. But it was clear that he was, he was speaking as a senior representative of ATC. And then he was, he was faithfully relaying ATC were considering putting a formal proposal to government.
But you're aware of the ICAC guidelines on direct dealing, that you shouldn't deal with people where there's an apprehended bias. It would have been better to go with the Chair and the CEO of the ATC.
Well, Mr. Latham, we've covered this about where this was in terms of the USP process. And I think I directed you to page 20 of the New South Wales Government's Unsolicited Proposal Process Guidelines, which specifically makes clear that there is nothing inappropriate with pre-lodgment meetings. They happen all the time. This idea that somehow there's a mailbox, a government mailbox, which people spend millions of dollars doing up a USP and drop in it and hope they get a result, that's just not how it works. Of course, stakeholders approach government to work out whether or not there's a level of interest. And that's what occurred on the 30th of October. And obviously, the process played out from there.
With all due respect, I asked you about the ICAC guidelines on direct dealing at page 17.
Well, Mr. Latham, I've responded that those guidelines are, that they are taken into account in terms of New South Wales Government's Unsolicited Proposal Guidelines.
Now, with the meeting with the Premier, why did you allow the meeting to go ahead when Mr. McMann and Mr. Minns had worked together? And ICAC warns that this familiarity bias, if staff members have previously worked with a counterparty, they may be favorably disposed to its interests. Wouldn't it have been better to meet with the Chair and the CEO where there was no such bias?
I think it was an entirely appropriate meeting of which ATC, through Mr. McMann, were relaying some of their thinking about what they wanted to bring to government. It was a preliminary conversation and to get a sense of whether or not the government had any interest or not. And Mr. McMann was a senior representative of ATC, so I thought that was completely appropriate. The other thing too, Mr. Latham, is the actions that I took away from that was to quickly put him in contact with the Cabinet Office, which I did.
And if Mr. Gallanos had rung you on the 26th of October, would he have got a meeting on the 30th?
Sorry, who's that?
Mr. Gallanos, if he'd rung you on the 26th of October, would he have got a meeting on the 30th?
Yes.
Chair.
Mr. Fang has been patient, as has Mr. Nanva, and then we'll go to you, Ms. Ferman. Mr. Fang.
Mr. Cullen, you indicated that there are a number of steps in approving the Premier's disclosures. You accept that ultimately it's the Premier's responsibility to ensure that the disclosures are correct. Do you accept that?
Yeah, look, in line with the Premier's memorandum, yes, we comply, we comply with that.
So is it fair to say that the Premier has final sign-off on those disclosures?
Totally inconsistent with the, sorry, consistent with the Premier's memorandum, yes.
And that means that the Premier is fully accountable and aware of those disclosures when they're made?
Of course.
Okay. And the Premier signed off on those disclosures?
I'll take that on notice, but the point I keep on coming back to is that we complied fully with the Premier's memorandum.
He's responsible. Right. Thank you.
We'll go to Ms. Ferman next.
Thank you. What involvement did you have or anyone else in the Premier's office have in relation to the development of the legislation to extend Russell Balding's term as Chair?
Point of order.
Chair, I don't believe that question falls within the terms of reference of this inquiry with respect to, I haven't concluded my point of order.
No, no, let Mr. Nanva talk to the point of order.
I don't believe that that question is in line with the terms of reference of this inquiry with respect to the proposal to develop Rosehill Racecourse. It doesn't even fall within the other related matters.
To the point of order, Chair. It has been speculated in the media that in fact the two are linked. So that's why I'm asking the question.
If you link it in the question, I'll allow.
If I link it in the question. So the, the legislation for the extension of Russell Balding's term happened in November, which was the same, roughly, you know, the same time as the office was discussing the Rosehill Racecourse development. What involvement did the Premier's office have with the legislation to extend racing New South Wales's, the Chair's term?
Right. Ms. Ferman, it probably, I probably need to be careful here. It probably, there'd be a cabinet-in-confidence aspect, I imagine, in terms of obviously legislation, that would have gone to Cabinet and a process that followed. This primarily, primarily the lead of Minister Harris in his office in terms of bringing that forward and looking at options and providing advice. But I just need to be, probably, if you want to go any further there, just take that bit on notice because there is a cabinet-in-confidence aspect.
Have you had any, did you have any discussions at the time in any of the meetings that you had that this may be required? Did you speak to Peter Philandis about it, for example?
Sorry, Ms. Ferman, can you, can you repeat that? Required? What does that mean?
Did you spoke to Peter Philandis about the legislation that he wanted the extension of Russell Balding's term as Chair?
No, I've never met or spoken to Mr. Philandis.
Thank you. Mr. Cullen, one last question for me. When you referred the matter on to Mr. Murphy, what context did you give him at the time?
That, again, at a higher level, Mr. Chair, that ATC were considering bringing a formal proposal to government that included the redevelopment of Rosehill Racecourse and that Mr. McMann had some questions attached to that, basically, and questions for officials.
So Mr. Murphy's evidence to this inquiry was that he didn't learn about that until the 2nd of November, when he received an email from Mr. McMann, which he saw effectively a map and came to the assumption that it was for the redevelopment of Rosehill Racecourse and he didn't know prior to that. Can you comment on how he came to that view?
I can't. I can't. No, I wouldn't reflect on the evidence that Mr. Murphy has given.
But your view is that when you referred the matter to him, you told him exactly what the proposal was about?
The context was also pretty evident, and I probably would have mentioned it too, that the context here, of course, was Metro West, right? And the government was considering its future, including petitionally additional stations. That was the context to which ATC was looking to formally approach government. And obviously, Mr. Murphy was already aware of that.
Thank you. Mr. Tudor Hope?
Mr. Cullen, why did it take a summons to get you here today?
Mr. Tudor Hope, I'd invite the committee to table the letter that I provided in response to the first request to appear. And obviously, I've referred the committee to that the second time. I hold by the McMullin principle, basically, and I know you've got Legislative Council practice as well, which cautions against this sort of as being commonplace. And it's my view that the Premier and Ministers as decision-makers are accountable when it comes to, are accountable to the Parliament and through Parliament committees as well.
But having received a request from the committee, notwithstanding that view, why wouldn't you have just taken the view that I should and give the evidence that you have given today?
Well, again, I would really appreciate if the committee could consider tabling my letter because, to be frank, I explained it and put a bit of detail in the study, I hope. Look, I would just point to the fact that I'm here.
You'd be aware of.
Under summons, though.
Point of order.
Look, to the point of order, yes.
Chair, the witness has answered the question. He has asserted his legal right to not attend. He's documented, he has documented to the committee the reasons why.
It's not a legal right, mate.
Yeah, especially after we've been signed.
He has documented his reasons why very clearly and he's answered, he's answered again, referring to those reasons. I don't think there's anything more to gain. And I think we're now badgering, badgering the witness.
To the point of order, continue. I will uphold the point of order in the sense that Mr. Cullen has provided an answer. The committee will certainly take into consideration your request to table your submission to the committee and that is fine, but I'll let Mr. Tudor hope continue with questioning.
You'd be aware that there, in the previous government, there were numerous occasions when either Chief of Staff or staff members had been requested to attend these meetings?
I'm aware of that.
And they didn't require a summon?
I still have the view.
They didn't require a summon?
I still have the view and I think that the McMullin principle is one that we should be holding to. Other jurisdictions, it's extremely rare. Doesn't really happen at the federal level. And I think staffing is a really important vocation. I think we do all need to bear in mind the importance of preserving that. And ultimately, it's the government and Premiers and Ministers that are accountable to the Parliament.
Do you accept that Labour set the precedent, though, in the last term of Parliament?
Okay. To the point of order of Mr. Nanva?
Yeah, we're now asking an opinion from, from Mr. Cullen. I don't think that's.
He's not a public servant. He's the Chief of Staff to the Premier. I'm asking.
No, the same standard applies.
No, 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 no.
Procedural fairness resolution 10 applies.
Yeah. I can ask, I can ask the witness, though, whether precedent was set when Labour members continually summoned.
Mr. Fang, if you rephrase the question, it will be within order.
Do you accept, do you accept that Labour members in the previous term of Parliament issued and received acceptance from numerous coalition staff members to appear before Legislative Council committees?
I'm broadly aware of the history here. I pointed to the letter. I received the invitation. I responded. I received the summons. I'm here.
Can I just take you, Mr. Cullen, to the announcement at Rosehill on the 6th of December that the USP and the sale was going to go ahead? How was that organised?
Do you mean as like, as a media event or do you mean, yeah, the media materials? Yeah. There would have been engagement between, there would have been engagement between the Premier's office, the Cabinet Office, ATC, given my recollection, Mr. Latham, was the media event was at Rosehill. So, yes, there would have been engagement involving those parties to put it together. And obviously, we would have sought or would have been provided to us, I'd have to take that on notice, but media materials, draft media materials, which we'd worked through, obviously wanting to make sure they're legal, et cetera. We would have gone through a process there, so.
And again, Mr. McMann was the point man for the ATC?
Yeah, yeah. We would have been talking to Mr. McMann about that.
Right. Are you aware of the evidence of Katie Knight here at this inquiry? She's from Investment New South Wales, where she said it was outside the guidelines of USP to make this public announcement, that normally up to and beyond stage one, it's kept confidential. So why was it made so public?
Yeah, Mr. Latham, I think you're, with the greatest of respect, cherry picking some evidence. I think other officials have put other evidence on the table about a proposal like this and the idea that somehow that you would, no one would be saying anything publicly before the government had considered stage one would be extremely unlikely. We live in the real world. I think we need to take account of that. But I'm aware, I'm aware of that evidence you're referring to.
Well, you disagree with her conclusion?
I would point you to the evidence provided by other officials, including the Premier's Department and including the Cabinet Office.
Okay, well, I'm asking about her, Katie Knight.
Sure. Well, I would just point to other, evidence of other officials and, yeah.
Okay, Katie Knight has subsequently told this committee in answers to supplementary questions, there have been five unsolicited proposals of land development involving a metro over the last 18 months and only one of them's been publicly announced. So why does this one stand out as requiring announcement? And in the context of the announcement, it looked really good for Mr. McMann, didn't it, that he was getting things done?
Look, on your first question, again, I refer you to the broader context in which the government's operating here when it comes to linking housing density to public transport. in which the government's operating here when it comes to linking housing density to public transport and wanting to maximize in terms of that value add, the public transport investment in the state, and in the context here, Metro West, the government couldn't have been any clearer or more transparent that it was interested in looking at additional stations along Metro West linked to housing density. We couldn't have been any more clearer or public about that.
But why was this the one out of the five that was announced publicly?
The government formed a view, based on the advice from the Cabinet Office, that that was appropriate, and then you saw the announcement on the 6th or the 7th of December, which basically, on the advice of the Cabinet Office, we announced an MOU to begin the process of an unsolicited proposal, so.
Can you provide that advice to the committee?
It would have been, it would have been in consultation with the Cabinet Office.
Can you provide that advice?
Well, look, it's probably legal advice, so there might be a legal professional privilege issue, but I'm happy to take that on notice, Mr Latham.
And are you aware of Mr McMahon at the racetrack telling people that he's guaranteed-
Sorry, at the racetrack, which, when?
Well, the associates at the racetrack telling them frequently that he's always going to get a job in the future because people know he can get a meeting so quickly with the Premier.
Well, yes, look, I'm very conscious of the time that Mr Cullen has been here. I will uphold the point of order, Mr Nambur. One last question for Mr Tudor Hope, then we'll return to Mr Nambur.
We'll just summons him again, that's right.
Mr Cullen, when you wrote the letter to this committee relying on the McMullin Principle, did you have any consultation with the Premier before you wrote that letter?
No.
You didn't discuss it with him?
No.
Did you discuss with him your appearance here today?
He wished me well this morning.
Nothing else, did, in relation to the evidence you might give?
No.
Thank you, Mr Nambur.
Thank you, Chair. Mr Cullen, just stripping away the personal characterization of what this proposal is, whether it's a redevelopment, whether it's the sale, whether it's a privatization, stripping that away, going to the 30th of October, what is your takeout? Your takeout from that meeting, and what did you do following the meeting? Stripping away all the characterization that has been placed on the substance of the proposal?
Yeah, look, I think Mr Nambur, as per the evidence I've given, it was clear, the purpose of the meeting was ATC suggesting that they were putting together a formal proposal to bring to government, gauging basic interest, and then working out the next step. Obviously, there would be questions tied up to that about what process formally they need to engage with government, which is when I form the view that the Cabinet Office, I needed to get some advice and basically hand off to the most appropriate official, which Mr Murphy then suggested would be him, and then he contacted the ATC. So that was the process, Mr Nambur. Yeah, it was clear ATC were bringing forward to government a proposal to redevelop Rosehill, and obviously that's morphed into where you've got the stage one outcome in March this year, which includes the redevelopment of Rosehill Racecourse, plus a whole lot of other features as well.
Coming to Mr Latham's questions around, I suppose, privacy, just generally, the unsolicited proposal process is a fairly structured process, is it not?
Absolutely it is. I would refer the committee to the New South Wales Government Unsolicited Proposal Guidelines. Importantly, page 20, very important in terms of anticipating and it being completely appropriate, that there are pre-lodgment conversations that often do occur between government and proponents, which makes sense, because from a proponent's perspective, often putting together and going through a full process, which is obviously underway in our case with this, you can be looking at spending a lot of money when it comes to consultants. So working out whether or not this is something that the government's interested or not is completely in line with the process outlined in the New South Wales Government's Unsolicited Proposal Process.
So once a proposal becomes more developed, the USP process strips out Premiers, Ministers, Staff away from the process, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Mr Cullen, you indicated that page 20 of the government's guide indicates that pre-meetings in relation to USPs are entirely appropriate, is that correct?
Yes, can I just, can you just let me go to that?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, page 20?
Yeah.
And what does it say?
It is recognized that there may be numerous discussions at many levels between the proponent and government stakeholders in order to ascertain government needs and to better understand the business environment.
Okay, so you acknowledged then that there were pre-meetings about this?
Well, I'm characterizing the meeting of the 30th of October that way.
So my point is going to be, and I think you already know now where I'm going to go, Mr Cullen, you've had a pre-meeting in relation to the USP. Should the Premier's disclosure not have been listed as a pre-meeting to a USP, not a meet and greet? You've misled in your disclosures, is that not correct, Mr Cullen?
You're basically looking at what's occurred subsequently and trying to retrofit a state- like, it's a conspiracy in search of a theory, basically.
Do you lodge that?
Just let Mr Cullen answer the question, and then that will conclude Mr Cullen's evidence.
It was not an unsolicited proposal process, sorry, it was not an unsolicited proposal on the 30th of October.
It wasn't a meet and greet either, though, was it?
Well, I've already, we've canvassed on back and forth.
No, 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 we have well and truly impinged on this witness's time and gone quite a bit over.
There's a lot more for this witness to answer, Chair. I might suggest that we might have to invite him back or summons him back.
I can't suggest it. I think that Mr Cullen's evidence has been concluded. I do note that we are significantly over time. Mr Cullen, thank you very much for your attendance here today. You have taken questions on notice, and I will no doubt be assured that the Secretary will be in touch with you to seek answers for those, but thank you for your evidence today. That concludes the committee's hearing for today. Thank you very much, everyone, for your attendance, and we will now go into a deliberative meeting following itself. We could clear the room. Thank you all for your attendance.
Thank you.